This evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. The only item under petitions and communications this evening is a presentation from the Arts History and Cultural Council. Will the Arts History and Cultural Council Committee members please come to the podium and share your presentation with us?
Hello and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council members and city leadership. My name is Chris Floyd, and I am the Chair of the Arts History and Cultural Council. And this is Anne Brazil, our Vice Chair. We are honored to be sharing information about this advisory board with you tonight. Next slide, please. We'd like to start with some historical background and an overview of the board's primary duties. In 2021, the Arts History and Cultural Council was established by merging together two previously separate boards, the Public Art Committee and the Broomfield Cultural Council. The main duties of the two boards, the Public Art Committee's public art advisement duties, such as artist and artwork selection, and the Cultural Council's grant review duties for the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, were moved to this new board. The new board also began providing broader advisement for the full Arts and History Division in areas like project and goal prioritization, community feedback, and advisement on programs. Next slide, please. The board has ten total members, including one youth member and one youth alternate member. These are our current members. We have a lot of new members who were just appointed in March of this year. The exceptions are myself and Julie Fuller. We're both in our second terms on the board. Since the new term started in April, this board has already completed the annual SCFD duties required of us. And we're looking forward to advising and supporting new projects and programs of the Art and History Department this fall. Next slide, please. So with that background out of the way, we'll dig deeper into the main duties of the council that I touched on and share some examples of some of our contributions and talk about how our work is evolving in the coming year. Next slide, please. As mentioned, two key duties of the board are supporting Broomfield County SCFD and the Art in Public Places program. The board reviews SCFD grant applications and makes funding recommendations to the Broomfield City Council and the SCFD board. This spring, we reviewed applications from forty different organizations. We also review and update the guidelines for SCFD applicants. The Art in Public Places program is getting ready to begin a new chapter with an evolution of the program's goals and the types of projects offered to the community. And this means an evolving role for the Arts History and Cultural Council as well. I'll share a bit about those changes in a moment. Next slide, please. But first, we'll give some more details about SCFD or SCFD duties. As City Council knows, SCFD is a special tax district in seven metro counties, including Broomfield, which joined in 2001 when we became our own county. SCFD is a major funding source for arts, culture, and science organizations that offer programs in Broomfield. And enacting as the Cultural Council for Broomfield County is a significant commitment for all the members of our board. Applicant organizations are divided into two categories. First, there are Broomfield-based organizations who apply to us to receive general operating support from our SCFD funds. Then there are organizations from outside Broomfield who provide projects to Broomfield residents, and they apply for funding for those projects specifically. This year, for the 2024-2025 SCFD funding cycle, over $350,000 were allocated to fund these organizations and projects. Next slide, please. These are the Broomfield-based organizations that were recommended to receive general operating funding through Broomfield County SCFD awards. They represent a wide variety of artists and media, and the funds they receive not only provide enriching experiences to Broomfield audiences, but also help these artists and organizations to grow and flourish. Next slide. As mentioned, the Broomfield Art in Public Places program is currently undergoing an evolution to enhance the public art experiences that it provides to the Broomfield community. You have three documents in front of you tonight, which we are very excited to present as they represent years of work by staff with support from the Arts History and Cultural Council. The first is a Broomfield Art in Public Places brochure, which began as a proposal from a member of our board, resulting in two years of work to compile and design a brochure that increases awareness, accessibility, and enjoyment of the current public art collection in Broomfield. The next document is a new community art plan, which outlines the exciting new direction and goals of the Art in Public Places program. And last is an implementation plan, which outlines a schedule and operational approach, as well as recommendations for staff to deliver on the projects and goals that are outlined in the community art plan. Our council looks forward to supporting staff in this dynamic new approach to public art in Broomfield, centering community access, engagement, and experience with implementation support from Nine Dot Arts as public art consultants. Next slide, please. And these are a couple of examples of successful community-initiated projects within the Art in Public Places program. In 2023, community-powered art murals were installed on a structure in Community Park not far from here. This site was first suggested by a Broomfield resident and then was prioritized by our board and then expanded by our selection committee to include four murals rather than just one. Our goal with this was to install pieces that evoke some form of participation from art goers who encounter them, whether that's role-playing with the artwork, searching for hidden animals in one of the pieces, or taking and sharing photos of themselves with the artwork. One of the murals, the Broomfield Dragon, was selected by a community vote as well. Another project from 2023 was Alabrihe's Illuminados, which started as a proposal to host this temporary exhibit and broadened into Broomfield's first public art residency, in which these artists from Mexico not only brought their art to the library, but also brought workshops to local schools, creating a unique opportunity to share Mexican art and culture with Broomfield residents. And hopefully, everyone got to see these when they were in the library. They're beautiful. Next slide, please. That's everything we have to share with you tonight about the Arts History and Cultural Council. We'd like to thank you again for your time and your support tonight, and we'd be delighted to answer any questions you have for us.
Thank you very much for the update and the presentation. We'll now proceed with public comments on this item. If anyone would like to be heard on the Arts and History Council presentation, come on over to the podium.
Roxy Julal-Lockmar. I like all the art. I like all of the items that are having people think about things. The only thing that I don't like about the art that we have in Broomfield is on the control boxes on the highway corners or the street corners where we have our control lights. I don't mind having a kid's design and stuff around a school because I think it's important for to be there, for them to be happy and go lucky. But I like to see more of Broomfield be put on, if we even have any more boxes left, to be more Broomfield-inspired art put onto those boxes. And I guess I'm saying it needs to be more adult. Broomfield seems to be, with a lot of their art and their abstract stuff, seems to be pretty childish. I know that's way some art is, and that's good. But that's just not how I see Broomfield. I like to see Broomfield be Broomfield and not be so childish and only think of children when you're doing the art. We need adult input, too.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Check online. Nobody online?
Suzanne Crawford, Broomfield Heights, an SCFD board member representing Broomfield County. I just really wanted to come up here and acknowledge the hard work of this council and city staff. These three documents are absolutely amazing and something that Broomfield can really be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, well, now, comments and questions from council are next. Are there any council member questions for our council? Are there council? Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation, Chair. And as a former member of the council, it is amazing to see the work that you have continued. And obviously, again, to the Vice Chair for the staff as well. Just because, you know, the art projects that we do, the funds that you do is a lot. And I just want, you know, again, thank you and the volunteers who are part of this council for the hard work you do. Just because reviewing funding grants and also looking at art projects for Broomfield is a lot of work. And again, you are all volunteers, and I cannot express my gratitude for the work you've done for this amazing community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Just also wanted to repeat, I remember a couple of years ago when councilmember Winn, I think, was Chair, they first started talking about these booklets. It far exceeds my expectations from that meeting some time ago. It's amazing. So I hope this is available to other people. If people can see, I don't know what the distribution plan is or how many copies are available. But I just, in the few minutes I was able to thumb through it, I recognized some pieces and also found some really great pieces I am not aware of. So I'll have to check out. But I would be curious if other people have the opportunity or if it's online.
Councilmember, it will be. This is Cheryl German, I'm staff. You have the first rough draft. So we will have a perfect bound printed and available to the community very soon. But it's not quite there yet. You've got the rushed copy.
It looks finished to me. I would, thank you. I would just say that I think that one indicator of a thriving community is the public art you see in that community. And I think it always makes me happy when driving around Broomfield to see all these different, unique pieces of wide variety and diversity of art in hopefully all corners of the community. So thank you for everything you do, and thank you to all the volunteers for all their time, especially dealing with the SCFD applications. That's a lot of work and a hard job to make because some people get told no. So I know that's difficult. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So you had mentioned merging two of these very busy boards, both the Public Art Committee and the Cultural Council. One of my concerns when we did that was just the amount of work, the workload that was going to come along with this, as well as kind of that rhythm for how all of these duties were going to get done throughout the year. How are members holding up to these changes? And are there changes that need to be made so that we aren't asking too much of these volunteers?
Yeah, thanks for asking. You know, one of the nature of the SCFD process is that the deadline for those applications to come in is a certain time, and we have to have our recommendations at a certain time. So in many ways, that process is sort of always going to be intensive. And we do have a growing list of organizations, you know, every year, it seems like. And we've found some methods to make sure that we can sort of take some of the burden, streamline that process a bit. And we made some good changes this year on that front. But that's sort of in its own, you know, container. And then, so the rest of the year is when we, you know, particularly in the fall coming up after the summer, is when we focus on the art in public places aspects of our duties. And so far, that division has worked pretty well. And so I appreciate the concern. It has been a lot, you know, to combine those. But I think the council is handling it well. And we've got a lot of new members, and we'll see how that goes when we get into all the other work this fall. But they did a fantastic job with SCFD this year.
Excellent. Thank you for that information. I mean, it sounds like that you've created efficiencies without sacrificing that quality of either your volunteer hours or the organizations and the art that you're putting forward. So thank you for that. I do appreciate all the new public art that's on display in our community. I really appreciate you taking all the time to review and recommend the funding levels for all the FCFD organizations' applications. I'm curious with the Arts in Public Places. And, you know, I was on the Cultural Council many, many moons ago. But I'm curious, how is this program different from that annual public art program that was discontinued at one point?
So the program is really, excuse me, councilmember Schaaf. The program is different in that we are approaching the goals and that with more community engagement and more involvement with each project. We're also working with a public art consultant to create capacity for staff and for the committee to really achieve our goals and really to bring each project to engage the community more with each project. So they're not done in the background, they're more done in the foreground.
Okay.
I think is really the same.
That sounds great. I mean, I think that the former program used to be more a call. An artist would bring a piece of art, and we would put it on display somewhere in the community. It sounds like this is a big improvement over that, where there will be much more community engagement, which is a comment I'll make in a little bit. But I wanted to make sure that I recognized our Broomfield, you know, representative to the board of FCFD, Suzanne Crawford. Thank you for your representation for Broomfield to that board. Thank you for all of the great work that you do. Many kudos come from that board, as well as people that work with that board. So thank you for all that. But I wanted to close in saying that, you know, as for the Art in Broomfield, not everything is going to be your taste, my taste. The art has been created by Broomfield residents, as well as non-residents, artists both young and old. The art really is an expression of our community. And that's what I would say is that, you know, with this new Art in Public Places program, it is really going to be more of that expression of the community. So I thank you for those changes. Thanks, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. I just, I love this. I wish I could see more strategic plans that looked as nice as this one is. I particularly appreciate your values. I love the two, unexpected and vibrant. I mean, you don't see people talking about those things too often, and it shouldn't take artists to think that way. And of course, public art should help all of us start to think that way. And so I love that. I love, too, the fact that you have a lot of collaborations. They're kind of buried at the back of the book here. But I don't see the Broomfield Photography Club mentioned here. So I hope you guys will reach out to them because they're an amazing group, and they often have shows here at the community center and also at the farmhouse. What's the name of the farmhouse? Yeah. And so there's obviously opportunities for expansion. I also see that you make a recommendation to hire a person to help further expand the program. And again, it's kind of buried in here because it's small print. You know, big picture, small print. I appreciate that. But I'd like to see that develop. However, you might be able to do that. But this is very impressive, not just in what you're doing, but in how you've structured it, how you've presented it. I mean, a vision statement that people can understand and know and remember is rare. So congratulations on that. Obviously, we love the fact that you're bringing this to us, but I'd love to see it more frequently. And when you have new opportunities or new partnerships or new events, temporary events maybe even, please let us know. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other councilmember questions or comments? I just want to say I'm grateful for this resource. We just had a town hall with our Skystone community, and one of the question was, why don't we have more public art? And I'm like, well, we do, you just don't know where it is. I know this has been, you know, it's a historical program, and it's all over the city. So when this is available or available online, it will be a great thing for us to share with the community so they know how much we're doing. Thank you again for the presentation and for all of your work.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, we're moving on to councilmember reports. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? Councilmember Lim.
This morning, I had the opportunity to be with the chamber with coffee and conversation. We discussed income-aligned housing and the charter ballot questions. This is the second year the chamber has requested that councilmembers attend their coffee and conversations. They ask a councilmember once a month to attend, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the business community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Schaaf. Oh, it's a tie. You can go first, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to thank the community for making such a great event with the Fourth of July this past week, your efforts to create a welcoming environment for many of the non-residents of Broomfield to enjoy this great event. Thank you to staff for your work to create a safe environment and such a well-run event, and the many volunteers that contributed efforts. I also wanted to make a big shout out to some of our staff members that created or didn't create, but worked with a local bakery on those cookies that were handed out by council. Those were a big hit in the community. So thank you to staff for that. Those were such a great treat that many people enjoyed. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to remember the last time I was, we had a council meeting that I'd give report at. So the Color Municipal League had their annual conference last month, June 19th through the 20th, that I attended up in Loveland. It was a good conference, had a lot of interesting discussions, met with a gentleman that was interested in helping us take over our light poles. That was an interesting conversation, so intriguing. But the big news is that I have been serving on the executive board for CML, representing Broomfield and large communities, and I was re-elected to that position for the next two years. So we'll continue to serve Broomfield in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other councilmember updates, events, reports?
I just wanted to let everybody know, this is a first-time event. The Broomfield Early Childhood Council is having their first big Broomfield playdate at the Broomfield Depot Museum. It's at 2201 on 10th Avenue, but you can look up Broomfield Depot. It's from 10:00 to 1:00, and they'll have all kinds of activities for your family, your kids. And we're one of their inaugural sponsors. So check that out this Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00.
All right, now, we'll move on to general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed elsewhere on this evening's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Chris Hammer Schmidt, Willow Run subdivision, mayor, Mayor Protam Council, sorry. Fireworks. I saw all your big signs, and they're illegal. And my dog spent the last two weeks hiding out in the cellar and shaking, and I couldn't calm her down. And I would just ask, you know, maybe we need more police or something. It's terrible for the pets. And so I would just request that you look into that a little bit and see what we can do for them. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on general public comments? All right, then. There are under reports, there's no scheduled items under reports. So next is Manager Hoffman. Do you have a report?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, do you have a report?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. Before we start, I want to note that some of these consent items are for the Board of Social Services and the Board of Equalization. Council sits as both those boards, and actions of city council are actions of the boards. So we don't have to gavel in anymore and take a roll call so the people up here know. We already are. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 6A through 6I by title?
6A, Approval of Minutes from the June 4th, 2024, and June 11th, 2024, regular city council meetings. 6B, Resolution Number 2024-55, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Adams 12 Five Star Schools and the non-standard municipal separate storm and sewer system MS4 permit. 6C, Resolution Number 2024-56, approving an agreement with Empire Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc. and authorizing specific expenditures for roof restoration at Paul Dura Recreation Center. 6D, Resolution Number 2024-86, approving a construction agreement with Summit Partners Limited for the Quail Creek Park restroom rebuild. 6E, Resolution Number 2024-78, approving a change of order to the construction agreement by and between Broomfield and Diamond Contracting Incorporated for the construction whistlepig well line. 6F, Resolution Number 2024-81, appointing Judge Linda Cook as an associate judge. 6G, Resolution Number 2024-83, Board of Social Services acknowledging review and review of expenditures and electronic benefits transfer for January, February, and March 2024. Resolution, or sorry, 6H, Resolution Number 2024-92, Board of Equalization, approving hearing officer recommendation on abatement petitions. 6I, Resolution Number 2024-89, Board of Equalization, approving mutual agreements on abatements over $10,000.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments on these items, starting with in-person. If anyone would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, staff, councilmembers, Mayor Protam. Roxy Julal-Lockmar. I bring this up every year and every time it comes up. It has to do with... 6G is engulf. It has to do with our social services information that we get. It's always in the behind, and it always seems to need more money. I've mentioned this before, that I think this needs to be curtailed. We need to keep it more to people who really need it. I've seen in the past, people are still on social services that, of course, in my eyes, of working for fifty-some years, sometimes two or three jobs, that some of these people don't need all of these services. They don't need everything handed to them on a silver platter. So maybe curtailing some of that, too. But still, yet, I know some of our money goes beyond our own city government social services. We have all of these other groups that we give money to. I think some of it needs to be looked at a little bit closer. They say nothing's duplicated. But I know of one that is duplicated. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm here for, it needs to be better checked. And these other groups, I don't think they're checked well enough. And so when this is, these monies come from many places, and some of the money still comes from the taxpayer, whether it comes from the immediate Broomfield taxpayer. It still comes from every one of us taxpayers because all of this money that comes in to help all these people and stuff that don't want to, some don't want to help themselves. It still comes from us taxpayers. We still put into the state, we still put into the federal government. And I don't care where the money comes from. It still comes from a taxpayer, and we still have to, like, give it out. Whether we get anything in return or not, it doesn't really matter. It needs to be curtailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Please come on up to the podium. And please state your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Sure, my name is Rob Sprecker, and I live in Red Leaf. For thirty-five years, I worked as a street cop and a detective doing child protective services. and then an administrator of the Adams County Jail. So I understand social services and government mandated services, I think, with a good, good deal of expertise. The Broomfield Department of Social Services started back in about 2001, and I met a number of the administrators who had come over from Adams County and Rapaoh County and other places where I had worked. And you all put together a framework that was absolutely stellar. The expenditures that the city engages in to support social services is absolutely necessary. The idea that there are individuals who try to game the system is nearly impossible, given the local and state and federal regulations that have to do with TANF and SNAP and WIC and other programs that absolutely are safety nets that we can't cut loose. I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate what our Department of Social Services does every day, and certainly think that we need to continue the protective services that we're providing to the citizens of Broomfield.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, I don't see anyone on the phone. Double check. Nope. So next, we'll go to council questions and comments. Does any member of council have any questions or comments on the consent items? Nope, I'm not seeing any. So before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item 6B contains an intergovernmental agreement, which requires two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that Consent Item 6A to 6I be approved? Councilmember Winn?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No, no, no discussion. Okay. Waiting for a name to pop up. So then, we'll move on to the vote. If there's no discussion, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, please state your vote verbally. There may be a delay. He's in hurricane state. Thank you. So all councilmembers have entered.
Yes, can you hear me?
We got you. Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen, and that passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. So moving on to action items, the first item under action items this evening is a public hearing in council's consideration on second and final reading of proposed amendments to the Broomfield Municipal Code to modernize our definition of software by explicitly incorporating software as a service. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, community and council. As Graham makes his way, Graham Clark from the Finance Department. A very brief, one-page presentation, given this is a second reading. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Graham Clark, Interim Finance Director, next slide. This is the one slide that City Manager Hoffman mentioned. This is a code change that is administrative in nature. It clarifies that the tax code is indeed taxable, the software as a service. And you can see the definition, the current code is out of date, and we need to update the current code with the proper terminology. That's what this, this does. We've received increased questions this year, specifically around software as a service, and so we wanted to bring it before you as soon as possible, and that's why it's before you tonight. Next slide. Are there any questions on this code change?
We'll go to public comment first, and then council, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. We'll now proceed with public comment, starting with in-person. If anyone would like to comment on this item, now's the time. Seeing none, we'll go to council questions and comments. Councilmember Leslie?
Where'd you go? You disappeared. I'm sorry. Would you elaborate a little bit? I'm not sure that I understand, and if I don't, perhaps there's confusion. You're saying you're changing the code to incorporate software terminology as software as a service. What is the current designation?
It's very broad right now, and so software as a service. For instance, software as a service is, you know, before, if you remember back, you could go to Best Buy and you could buy Microsoft 365 on CD. Now you can just download it directly, and, and we haven't changed the code in quite a while. And so the terminology of software as a service wasn't, wasn't around when we made this code. And so this one specifically notates that software as a service is taxable. So we have been getting questions quite a bit from businesses around whether software as a service is indeed taxable, and this just clarifies that.
Okay, so the current definition isn't clear about whether software is a taxable entity?
That's correct.
So, so the next step then is, if software is a service and is there taxable, what does that mean to the business owner? That any download that they make for purchase of software is taxable as a, as an item for sale?
That's correct.
Or for purchase in this case?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions from council? Questions are no, so there being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of Proposed Ordinance Number 2234 on second reading. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance Number 2234, amending Chapter 3, 4 of the Broomfield Municipal Code to clarify the treatment of software as a service.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Leslie?
I've moved the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing there's no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on Ordinance Number 2234. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. We got it. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Next item under action items this evening is council's consideration on second and final reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 2239 regarding possible charter changes to Chapter 3 Elections. We have a few agenda items related to the charter this evening, so to start, we're going to focus our discussion on the elections ballot question, since it's being heard on a second reading, and it's a separate item. After this item is completed, then we'll move on to the other proposed charter changes ballot questions, and there'll be another opportunity for the public to comment on those. So I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy Rogers, a city and county attorney. Good to be with you this evening. Good to see the community here. My computer is taking a second to load back up. Right. As you mentioned, Mayor, tonight, we're here on second reading of Ordinance 2239, which is specific to Chapter 3 in the charter. As a reminder, on first reading, council approved this question at the same time it had considered, and it had declined to move a repeal and replace forward. That's why we're on the different timeline, but we're going to focus on this Chapter 3 election question now. I will provide a background on all the charter process at this time, since we're going to go into all the items. Next slide. So Broomfield became a city and a, a home rule city in 1974. It became a city and a county in 2001, and while there have been amendments to the charter, there haven't been, hasn't been a comprehensive review of the charter since 1974. In 2022, council established the Charter Review Committee, made up of five residents and two councilmembers, who met throughout most of 2023 and presented their report and recommended changes to the charter in November of 2023. In, in April and May of 2024, council discussed all the potential charter changes recommended by the Charter Review Committee, recommended by other residents, changes that council, as individuals thought, might be needed in the charter. And then in the summer of 2024, where we're at now, we're actually considering ballot questions to be put on the November 2024 ballot in order to have the voters approve any changes to the home rule charter. Next slide. So the Charter Review Committee held thirteen meetings and presented its findings to council in a public meeting. Council has held four study sessions to talk about these charter, charter changes. And as I mentioned, council had a first reading of a repeal and replace ordinance with, which council failed, and this ordinance, Ordinance 2239, on June 11th. Next slide. The process to amend the charter is by ordinance. Other ballot questions can be approved by resolution. I think we had a question about why, or some ballot questions by resolutions, but this is our charter. It has to be done by ordinance. You have to have a first reading, you have to have a second reading, and we have to have this all done by the August 13th meeting so that we can get all that information to the Secretary of State and meet those deadlines. If approved, the change is not automatic. It goes on the ballot, and the voters have the ultimate approval whether to accept or reject the change. All right, next slide. So specifically on Ordinance 2239, that would revise the language in Chapter 3 Elections to change the state law governing elections from the municipal election code, which is Title 31, to the uniform election code, which is Title 1, except as set forth in charter. Now, a little background of what we have right now. So recall, Broomfield was a home rule municipality before we were a county. Now, as a city and county, our county clerk, it has the responsibility to act as a clerk that runs state and federal elections. Other counties look to Title 1 to govern their elections. Home rule municipalities all look to Title 31. We are in that odd sort of combine scenario where we are a home rule city and county. So the, the clerk had recommended, the clerk in my office, actually, the city and county attorney's office, has, had recommended changing the charter so that Title 1 would be the controlling state law. The reason for this is we would have challenges during elections in trying to determine what laws applied, because our charter says Title 31, municipal. But what we have to do as a county is mostly in Title 1. So this was a staff-proposed change. The Charter Review Committee heard staff's presentation and agreed, and they made this recommendation to council. The except as set forth in charter or code is in most of Chapter 3, and I'm going to go through the exact language in just a minute. Next slide. So the actual ballot question would look like this. Shall Chapter 3 be amended to change the law governing elections from the municipal election code to Title 1, except as set forth in the charter or code? And there's also another change, to change the term municipal elections to coordinated elections. As a city and county, we hold coordinated elections now. So we don't really have municipal elections in recognition of Broomfield's status as a city and a county. Next slide. This is a strike-through of what the language looks like now, and for those who have access to the staff packet, which is available on our website, this is in the staff packet in the ballot ordinance. So this would be the main change. All elections shall be governed by Title 1 of Colorado Revised Statute. And you can see the except as otherwise provided in this charter, as council may prescribe by ordinance, is in that Section 3.1. Next slide. In 3.2, this is where we start to see the change to coordinated. Also, special elections can still be called by resolution or ordinance of council if needed. We just took out the word municipal. It's still a Broomfield election. There was also a suggestion by the Charter Review Committee to take off the timing for polling places. That is set by state law. We cannot control that, especially on the state and federal elections. Next slide. The Section 3.3 precincts has a cleanup change, which, I'm sorry. Is there something coming through a speaker? Oh, I thought it was coming, I thought maybe that might be Councilmember Henkel. In Section 3.3, there was some outdated language on precincts, how they shall remain. That's when we transitioned from a statutory city to a home rule city in 1974. And then in Section 3.4, our elections are nonpartisan. They remain nonpartisan. We just updated that language. Next slide. Section 3.5 provides for recalls in Broomfield, a change to city to say city and county, consistent with Section 3.1, that recalls would be governed by Title 1, except as otherwise provided in the charter, as council may prescribe by ordinance. Right now, recalls are governed by Article 21 of the state constitution. Actually, not Title 1 and not Title 31 at all. There, and right now, consistent with the constitution and charter, council has the power to adopt recall procedures by ordinance. And that's the end of this presentation on this specific item. Mayor, if there's any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We'll now proceed with public comments on this ordinance, 2239. If you'd like to be heard on this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I want to start by stating and recognizing that this proposed ballot issue is intended to bring the Broomfield City and County Charter in line with the existing operations of Broomfield as a city and county. Title 31 is specific to municipal elections, so changing the controlling document in Broomfield to reference Title 1 instead of Title 31 makes sense and is rightly prioritized as a ballot issue this year. Having said that, I do have concerns with the language that allows election law in Broomfield to be changed by a simple majority of the elected representatives to this council. That is my understanding of the, quote, "or as council may prescribe by ordinance" clause of the proposed Sections 3.1 and 3.5 of the Broomfield Charter. I understand this clause allows for flexibility should the need arise if Title 1 is ever changed in such a way where Broomfield cannot or does not want to comply. But it could certainly be seen as a form of Calvin ball, where the players get to make up the rules for the game as it goes along. Does this mean that a simple majority of council, as ordinances are passed by a simple majority, could change anything regarding elections in Broomfield? Or does this mean council can only make changes where the state constitution and Title 1 are silent? For example, using the table in the staff memo regarding recalls, as it nicely lays out which documents speak to various items. The constitution is silent on the cost of the election, but Title 1 speaks to it. Can council pass an ordinance that goes beyond what Title 1 states? Can council pass an ordinance that prohibits reimbursements when a recall fails in opposition to Title 1? Another example, the constitution states vacancies must be filled by an election. Can council change this by ordinance so that recalls are filled by appointment overriding the state constitution? It seems that while the constitution, when the constitution speaks to an issue, especially regarding elections, council should not be able to contravene the provisions in the constitution. If that is not the case, then I would ask that Ordinance 2239 be amended to strike the, quote, "or as council may prescribe by ordinance," end quote, in both Sections 3.1 and 3.5. Or at minimum, change the clause to state by ordinance passed by two-thirds vote of council. Broomfield council has almost always been filled by public servants. However, it seems that now, for many on council, it is more about being a career politician than a public servant. To those that still behave as public servants, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your work and dedication to the betterment of Broomfield. To those of you who behave as politicians and are looking for ways to expand your power and assert your authority, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You may not have written this text at issue, but it is because of your actions and your overreach that the clause written to address unforeseen circumstances has now become controversial.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Please make your way to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Neil Alair. I live in First Filing. And I just want to talk, not on all that Mr. Ewalt spoke about, but the first thing, I agree with him, moving really either 231 or 1. But I was involved in the recall last year, and very prominent attorneys had to scratch their head for a while to figure out which law applied to Broomfield. So just clean that up. It'll be simpler for the citizens when they want to. It'll be simpler for the citizens when they want to take advantage of that provision and make it simple. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Don't see anyone online for 7B, so then we'll move on to council questions. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for Mr. Ewald. Ms. Rogers, as a home rule city and county, we already have the authority to set up our own election code, correct?
Yes. So, under the Colorado Constitution, there's actually a specific provision that states that home rule municipalities, which we still have those powers, we retain those, have the power to legislate upon all matters pertaining to their local elections.
So, the language of adding the council by ordinance, that's just clarifying language. We already have that authority.
Well, Councilmember Marsh Holson, are you talking about the recall provision?
No, I was talking about, well, both, I guess.
Okay. Hey, Curtis, can you pull up the slides and go to Slide 7? In Section 3.1, we do have the power right now on elections, generally. The language is in there. We're just changing the municipal election law to Title 1, but we have "except as otherwise provided in the Charter, as council may prescribe by ordinance." So, we do have the power today, and that's consistent with home rule authority to modify elections. In 3.5, the recall provision is actually currently written slightly different. If you can go to Slide 10, Curtis? So, in 3.5, and I apologize that this is stricken, it says, "An officer may be recalled through the procedure in the manner provided for in Article 21 of the state constitution. Consistent with the constitution in this charter, council may provide by ordinance for further recall procedures." So, it is slightly different. If we passed an ordinance today, if council passed an ordinance today, we would double-check to make sure it's consistent with the constitution and other provisions in the charter. So, the change to make Title or Section 3.5 match Section 3.1 is that the charter, then code, then state law controls. So, it's a slight difference.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Anderson.
Okay. So, I do have one additional question regarding, follow-up to Councilmember Marsh Holson. Can we pass an ordinance today, like, not today, but bring that forward now before this goes to the ballot and just solidify the current recall procedures? Like, would that be consistent with the constitution and the charter?
Yes, we could, but a good example of that, so the constitution says that, I think it's, and I wish I had that chart that Mr. Ewald mentioned up, it's 90 days that you can recall. So, that would be an example of a provision we couldn't locally change right now, because that's solidified in the constitution. Their constitution has specifically, specific vacancy provisions, how you feel a vacancy caused by a recall. We could not change that, because we must be consistent with the charter now. But yes, council could pass an ordinance today.
Okay. So, we would actually, in order to make it consistent, we'd have to wait until other charter changes occurred?
No, no. Let's say, let's say we didn't do any of the charter exercise. Let's say none of this happened. Council could pass an ordinance addressing recall procedures in my office and doing our due diligence would make sure it's consistent with the constitution, because that's what our charter says. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
All right. Thank you. Any other council member questions? Nope. Okay. There being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2239 on second and final reading. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2239, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the City and County of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5, 2024, a proposed amendment to Chapter 3 of Broomfield Charter to modify its election provisions to reference Title 1 of the Colorado Revised Statutes, the Uniform Election Code, rather than Colorado Municipal Election Law.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2239 on second and final reading and ordered published in full? Mayor Potem Shaff.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor Potem Shaff.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this ballot question is a lot about local control. Local control is something that Broomfield has fought hard to retain in many different issues. This ballot question allows for expanded local control, which, you know, reminds me of the great Uncle Ben says to Peter Parker, who is really Spider-Man, which I hope I didn't ruin that for anyone, but Uncle Ben says, "With great power comes great responsibility." So, with this ballot question, there's a lot of great things that can come out of this local control for our elections and the flexibility for Broomfield elected officials to make updates and enhancements. There's a lot of benefits to that. There are also risks with that as well. But for me, I believe that the benefits outweigh those risks. I think it's going to be incumbent for all of us as a community to ensure that any changes to that, that we are all paying attention to those. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor Potem. And again, my only concern here remains that as we're bringing forward, as we're trying to fix one piece to make our elections more clear, we're changing, we're changing some of the pieces of the, as no other recall procedure. I'm not sure if there's anything else that we are potentially changing. So, with the, the goal here is to get this passed through the voters and to get it approved so that our clerk and others can do their job much more smoothly. So, with this, I intend to vote yes tonight, but I do want to, like, notice my intention that I do want to bring forward that request for future action, that we would go forward with the changes to the ordinance wherever we can to be consistent with the constitution and charter, to solidify the procedures as they are today. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other council member questions? Or, no? All right. Well, then, seeing no further questions, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2239. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Yes, I heard a yes. Okay. Thank you. We have all the votes, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Thank you all. Moving on to Item 7C, we have, the next item is council's consideration on first reading of proposed ordinances number 2243 through 2247 on ballot questions to amend the Broomfield Charter. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. Again, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. Nancy Rogers, the City and County Attorney. So, these are ballot questions for first reading. Same timeline applies everything I said in the previous presentation. The voters will have the ultimate approval. If passed tonight on first reading, these will be published and made available on our website, and then we will have second reading on August 13th. If passed then, then they will go on the ballot in November 2024. Next slide. We'll start with proposed ordinance 2243. This adds term limits for elected officials to be three consecutive terms. Now, term limits are not currently in our charter. So, because it's not in our charter, we do look to the state law. State law has two term limits for any elected official with a term over two years, and three term limits for any elected official with a term that's two years or less. So, for council, you currently are two-term limited. The mayor, because she has a two-year term, is three-term limited. So, that's our current situation, but for anybody trying to find term limits in our charter, it's not there. So, this is an effort to actually add term limits to the charter. Next slide. The ballot question would be, shall Section 4.3 of the Charter be amended to limit a mayor and limit a council member to no more than three consecutive terms of office, provided the voters of Broomfield choose to retain that person? The, the, the actual language that would amend the Charter addresses partial terms of office, being more than 50% of a term. So, if you had somebody that was appointed midterm, we would look at the calendar to see if that was a term of office. Also, consistent with some recent case rulings related to mayors and council members, those are considered different offices. So, a person can have two terms as a council member and then run for mayor, and that doesn't violate the consecutive provision. That's proposed ordinance 2243. I'm going to do short summaries of all the proposed ordinances, and then we can talk about them, and I'll answer questions. Next slide. The next one is proposed ordinance 2244. This was a recommendation by staff made to the Charter Review Committee and a recommendation by the Charter Review Committee to City Council. This revises the language in the Charter to require that land use rezones and land use cases for specific property, not a multi-property development, would be approved by resolution, not ordinance. Next slide. The ballot question would say, shall Section 6.4 of the Charter be amended to permit, permit, not mandate, permit council to approve rezonings and other land use cases related to a specific property by resolution at a public hearing? I want to talk about a little background about this. As council has seen, and those who attend council meetings, when we get a land use application, very often, there's a site plan amendment, a plat amendment, or other parts of that land use application for that specific property that are approved by resolution. And then you have this oddity where at the same meeting, you have a first reading or a second reading of an ordinance. We saw this most recently in the Watki Rezone Open Space, where not only are we doing the rezone to match our current open space zone designation, but we also need to do a comp plan amendment, and that's by resolution. So, we have this, early today, I used the reference of a hanging chat of a meeting, but I don't know if a lot of people are going to remember that, I mean, that reference, that we have this sort of odd outlier of a, of a meeting. So, nothing changes as far as notice. The public is still notified of this land use application. The public, there, any requirement for notification to the neighbors would still exist. This would not change any of it. What it changes is pretty much saying, we don't need to have that odd second meeting when the majority of the land use application is getting addressed at this one major meeting. We saw this, I'll give another example to council and the public. We had a pretty contentious land use application that's been approved, so we can talk about it, it's not quasi-judicial, about a, about a development within a residential community. And in that, there was a site plan amendment and a vacation of a right of way. A vacation of a right of way is a type of land use case that now requires two readings. There was a lot of public interest in that application. So, staff did a great job making sure the neighbors had noticed, they knew what meeting to go, but did had to address questions about, wait, so should I be there on June 1 or June 4? I don't, why are there two meetings? I thought you said the site plan amendment was going to be approved this meeting. Yes, but we also need to do, I mean, we, we think it creates less confusion on land use applications, but I want to be really, really clear. There will still be opportunity for public comment. There'll be still notices, there, there's still all the other procedures so that our public knows what's going on in a land use application. So, that's a little background of that change. And again, this is, this was a staff priority and a staff recommended, recommended change. Next slide. All right, 2245, this is also a staff-recommended change. So, this would modify the publication requirement so that ordinances are required to be published on the City and County website, rather than required to be published in the newspaper, but they still can be published in the newspaper upon council's direction. Next slide. The actual ballot question would say, shall 69 of the Charter be amended to require publication of ordinances on the website and permit, but not require publication in a newspaper of general circulation? Now, I have seen some of the public comment on this. The cost related to publication can vary, but generally, it's between $20,000 and $30,000 when we have, what was our very recent multi-page ordinance on, on our code change related to water? I mean, that was 30 pages that went through three readings and had amendments. We had to publish that three times. So, it, and if anybody looked at what that publication looked like in the enterprise, and this is no knock, this is the layout of the paper, it is very small and hard to read. So, with those concerns in mind, the cost, also how it looks publicized, and also, we know that more than 80% of our residents use our website to get information. I will, I've seen the community survey as well, and I know that more than 50% also still go to the enterprise to check out information, but we, we also know that our website is a very active communication place. And should it be a matter that council believes publication in the newspaper is warranted, then council can definitely direct staff to publish it in the newspaper, just like it, just like it does right now. All right. Next slide. 2246 is updates to Chapter 9, which is applicable to Broomfield employees. Now, I just would like to talk dates again. Chapter 9 is our personnel chapter, addresses those of us who are employed by the City and County of Broomfield, 1974. There's some needed updates to this. So, a personal merit system remains required by the Charter. We're definitely not getting rid of the personal merit system. And let me step back again. This is a staff-recommended change. Our HR director and my employment lawyer from my office presented to the Charter Review Committee, and they passed on this recommendation to the council. It clarifies who is and included in the personal merit system. For some reason, the fire chief and the police chief were, were included in the system, but other department heads were not. We don't have a fire chief. Cleaned up that language, clarified language to require that the personal merit system provides a right to administrative appeal on disciplinary actions. Now, we do that now, but this locks it into the Charter. It removes references to the Personal Merit Commission from Charter. It's still, the Personal Merit Commission is the body that hears our employment appeals. The person, that commission remains in code and is an active commission. This removes that reference from Charter. The reason for that is because we're looking at how cities and counties across the nation address employee grievances, employee issues, employee appeals. Some of them are very complex and might be more, more appropriate to be heard by a hearing officer rather than a commission, and this gives the ability for staff through council to maybe look at our code and make revisions if needed. Again, we're not suggesting any changes to the code, if needed, in the future, to help meet our employees' needs. Next slide. So, this would be a bulleted ballot question. Shall Chapter 9 personnel be updated to, be amended to update language, retain the merit system for permanent employees, set that right to an administrative appeal, clarify that all department heads and senior leadership are excluded from the system? I say we, I'm, I, Jennifer and I have a different relationship with council as contract employees, but our department heads are at will, so that's why they're excluded from the system. It would be very awkward to have a department head appeal Jennifer's discipline to the Personnel Merit Commission, but every other employee, permanent employees included, and remove that reference to the Personnel Merit Commission, which remains in code. All right. Next slide. One more. So, proposed ordinance 2247 is a sort of cleanup and modernization ordinance ballot question related to the City and County Attorney's Office and the municipal court. So, as council is aware, and some of the public might know, my office now includes risk and safety management. I have a risk and safety manager who's a non-attorney, and I have three admin staffs. So, this recognizes that I employ staff in addition to attorneys. It specifies our existing special counsel, which works under the direction of the City and County Attorney, who serves at the pleasure of council. Council tells me to do X legally, I tell our outside counsel to do X legally. On the municipal court side, it revises this section so that our providing judge shall be the department head for court and hires and supervises those employees. Our court, as, as many local courts in the last few years, has gotten bigger. We're seeing more cases come through our local municipal and, and for us, our City and County Court. She is now full-time. She's doing other type of programs to address unlawful and illegal behavior in the community and try to get people to not revisit the court often. So, So, so this record, this would be a change that would recognize how our presiding judge, Amy Bachman, is currently operating. And then it modifies the requirements for removal of a judge. In our current charter, we have admittedly some outdated provisions on what we could remove judges with. And we now, again, 1974, now we have a very solid code of judicial conduct that is statewide used as a metric for judging judges' behaviors and also deciding whether to retain or oust them if need be. Next slide. So this would be another bulleted ballot change. Shall Chapter 10 be amended to update language, allow the city attorney to employ non-attorneys, specify that special counsel works under the direction of the attorney, who serves at the pleasure of council, recognizes the judge as a court's department head, and sets the reasons for removal of a judge to be consistent with state law or the code of judicial conduct? Next slide. And that is the end of the presentation on those questions. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. This is your opportunity to make comments on any of those proposed ballot questions on first reading. So if you'd like to be heard, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. John Ewald Pinnacle North. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on issues like this before council. Allowing public input is important, but I cannot help but think that it would have been more reasonable and fair to split these five proposed ballot issues into separate agenda items to allow focused public comment on each item. I will try to fit my comments into three minutes. Hopefully, if any of these ordinances are carried forward to a second reading, they will be treated as individual agenda items to allow appropriate public comment. I will speak fast and get as far as I can. Mayor, please cut me off when I've exceeded your graces. In general, the first priority of changing the charter should be to update it to reflect reality. Ordinances 2239, 2247, and I think 2246 are focused on doing this. I'm astonished that there is no proposed ballot issue to change all instances in the charter of city to city and county, and the other global textual change, changes that update our charter to reflect Broomfield as it is today. Why was that not the priority? Those changes are simple, extremely likely to pass, and should be the first issue presented to voters. Instead, we are talking about three other ordinances tonight that seek to change the way Broomfield operates. We are putting wants before needs, and that is a really poor way to accomplish anything. So taking them in order, 2243. Why is this a priority? Is anyone on council willing to stand up and say what, why they think this is a higher priority than updating the language in the charter to reflect the way Broomfield is today? There is only one council member who would have an opportunity to run for a third term next year and would depend on this item being on the ballot this year. Previously, that council member has been opposed to changing term limits. I'm not intending to speak for that council member, nor hold him to his previous statements, but he is the only one that could legitimately vote yes on this item tonight. If any other member votes yes, they are needlessly prioritizing what is clearly a want over, and that is not a need. Many of you have said you are worried about voter fatigue, but at the same time, you are pushing non-immediate ballot items. The simultaneous statements do not compute. Please be a public servant and not a politician, and table this ordinance for a future year. 2244. If there ever was an argument against this ordinance, it's the previous special counsel meeting. Usually, there is plenty of opportunity for an interested party to comment prior to a rezoning hearing, that it should be acceptable to change to rezoning by resolution. That is not always the case, as demonstrated last week. I can see the argument for this change in keeping related items like SDP amendments in sync, but this is still a want and not a need, as it is proposing a change to current operations. 2245. The most compelling reason I have heard for this change in charter is the cost of posting ordinances to the enterprise. Not that staff, not the staff effort it takes to have the information published, nor the fact that if no newspaper existed, Broomfield would not be complying with the charter. The cost of publishing in the enterprise presented tonight was $20,000 to $30,000. I know that Broomfield spends way more than $30,000 on non-essential expenses, so the cost of publication in the enterprise is not really a need. Having a town newspaper is a benefit to the community. I also understand that at some point, a newspaper may not exist, so it is prudent to remove the requirement from the charter. That is clearly a need. If council were open to a compromise, an ordinance could be passed before November that preserves publication in the newspaper as it is today, and at the same time, move this ballot issue forward. The charter will be future-proof, and at any point in time when it becomes evident that it's not necessary to publish in the newspaper, then the ordinance could be revisited. 2246. If this ordinance is recognizing how Broomfield operates today, then it makes sense to pass this as it is, as it is a need to keep the charter in line with current operations. If any part of the proposed changes are addressing deficiencies in the way Broomfield operates, could those parts be called out separately? Do they need to change, or do staff want them to change? And 2247. This ordinance seems to be completely focused on updating the charter to reflect the current operations in Broomfield. That should be the first changes made to the charter, so I hope this issue moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward and state your name and neighborhood to the record.
Hello, my name is John Mikkelsen from Ward 5. And I see my representatives are here. Todd Cohen and Heidi Henkel is not here, but I've heard her voice. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight, and thank you for being here to support as I come up here and talk. I'm a newbie to local politics, and I say this to my shame. You may remember me from a speech I made three months ago in this room. I'm, I'm the Canadian-born, and since 1988, which was during the Ronald Reagan second term, that's when I became an American citizen. I'm a proud American. I've always made it a priority to vote in all major elections. I now see that I've been shortsighted in that I've never participated in local politics. My wife Diane and I moved to Broomfield in 2003, partly because it was a newly-formed county of its own and vibrant. I am just this year discovering that I have an important voice in what matters here. It's my honor to fight for Broomfield now. One thing is sure, that this lion has awakened from his sleep. Just hear him roar. To our mayor and council members of Broomfield, thank you for your service on our behalf. You were voted in to serve us first. Should you serve honorably, there is no reason why we should, we shouldn't re-elect you, re-elect you. It's my thought that ordinance 2243 should be put off the ballot in this election year. Increasing the length of your terms and salary increases well into the future should wait until after this year's major election, in my opinion. Just put us first by good governance, and don't make this year about your personal career and ambitions, please. Let's look at this proposed, this proposal another year. Allow me to give an example of putting off something until next year from the world of championship golf. The world's number-one player is American. As a proud American, he set a goal at the beginning of 2024, to play several key tournaments this year, including three of the four majors. And he planned that he would miss the biggest tournament of the 2024 season, which starts tonight, by the way, in Scotland. Since he wanted to be chosen to represent the USA in the Olympics, four Americans were chosen. Hence, he won't be playing this week for a major, which holds a big potential payoff for him. There's always next year. Oh, and one last thought. No to rank voting ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Let me have a second to adjust it for the short people?
Sure.
I'm Sandy Anderson from the Broadlands. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and city leadership staff. I'd like to thank you all for what you do, as it is well beyond what is understood, acknowledged, and you all deserve our respect and support. Ditto on the CRC work. They also deserve our thanks, respect, and support for taking a 50-year-old document and no longer kicking the comprehensive review down the proverbial road. Pertaining to tonight's reading, you have my support on the changes put forth. Increasing the mayor's term of office to four years from two makes sense. Sorry about the voice. I also support a more consistent and fair election term for three terms for our council members as they serve as both council and commissioners. Many others have five-year terms in those roles, serving total as city council and commissioner, so three is a good compromise to serve for our constituents. Having the vision, competency, and acumen to continue Broomfield's progress is essential. The acknowledgement and continuity of leadership in the dual roles of representing us as a city and a council, as a county should take precedence over the unfortunate misplanning, foresight, and appropriate funding 23 years ago when we became a county. In closing to all of our electeds, let me remind you that you were voted in. You won your elections, and you are who we chose to represent us. You have our trust, you have our support, and you have our vote. Thank you.
Next.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, and staff. Chris Hammer Schmidt will run subdivision. As a taxpayer resident of Ward 1 and a concerned citizen, I am asking you to vote no on putting term limits on the ballot for November. One of your priorities is diversity, equity, and inclusion for the community. I'm thinking you're missing the diverse part of that because you don't have a diversity of opinions up on the podium typically. You all vote yea, you all vote no. I ran for city council. I have a different view of government. I think government should be limited. I think two terms is enough. It's a public service. I was a research scientist for 31 years. I battled vocally with other PhDs. Not everybody sees things the same way. Diversity is the strength of any community. If everybody thought the same way, then anything would, nothing would move forward, right? I mean, we'd all agree, and there'd be nothing to find out. There'd be no scientific investigation. There would be nothing to move priorities forward. I also think that you should seek equality, which means sameness of amount, as well as status or shape. By extending your term, you're saying you're more important than those that came before you. You're saying you need three terms because, you know, I think two terms is enough. You're a public servant, and you can get the job done, and you can do your public service in two terms. How inclusive is it if you are excluding people of the community by serving three consecutive terms? As Mayor Castriata said at one point, you can serve a third term. You just take a break for four years, and if you choose to do your public service again, then you can get elected again. You have guiding values. We are here to serve our residents as advocates and problem solvers. We are fiscally responsible. By increasing your pay and your term limits, you are not being fiscally responsible. I would have gladly sat on council to serve my community by not asking for more money from the taxpayers because when I went to work every day, I thought of the taxpayer, and I used their funds wisely to do my research. You say we encourage new ideas and suggestions. How can you encourage new ideas and suggestions when you don't allow others to sit on city council? We maximize opportunities to advance the interests of community as a whole. Maximizing opportunities would be by supporting others to sit on city council. This leads to an understanding of how a city is run and gives people a stake in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Mike Billingsley. I'm from Ward 4. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'd like to address ordinance 2243. Obviously, that's popular. Here in the smallest county in our state, a council position, nor the mayor, was ever intended to be a career or even resemble one. Hopefully, each of you have an actual career to return to or continue while serving here. What our charter intended council members to do is to make simple, limited policy changes, if any at all, and move on. We, the citizens, are not looking for anyone to sit here for 12 years, particularly people who are continually proposing policy change or commissioners who have become so informed that they work on their own agendas. And we certainly do not need to increase salaries to encourage career politicians. This job can be easy. Paying you more will likely make it more complicated, leading to more cost for our citizens. And those citizens aspire for council to follow one slogan. K-I-S-S. You fill in the last S. Trust us. Most of our neighbors would far prefer you put in four years and get a thank you for doing your part as you leave. Let someone else do their community's service and keep this council fresh. If you listen to the independent media, the mood in the US today is to cut government departments. I'm starting to understand that we need to cut back here in Broomfield. I understand that the CCOB budget has increased 65% since 2017. This is quite likely due to many people making too many informed policy decisions. So let's maintain our current state limits on these terms. For sure, this current group most likely has accountability for massive increase in our CCOB spending. This costs citizens more every day. By the way, did you know that the federal legislature has an approval rating of 13%? That's embarrassing, and it's partially due to incumbents who are difficult to vote out of Congress. Based on a budget problems and local taxes we're paying, I'm wondering if the current CCOB council rating would be much higher. For example, recent policy related to new development caused an 80% revenue shortfall, which resulted in a considerable budget revision. That's called overregulation, and it's too many policy ideas by this body. Not to be rude, but if you have been here for two terms, then it's best you move on and let the next person move from your ward, move forward. My hope is that the next guy is a little more pragmatic, conservative, and understands limited local government. So please, look yourselves in the mirror. You're all pretty average Broomfield citizens from varied backgrounds. I'd ask that you remember who you are and step back to being a regular member of the community after serving a few years.
Thank you, Mr. Billsborough. Your time's expired. All right, next.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and... I am Janet Sund. I'm from Ward 5, and I've lived here my entire life. And I don't like how things are going in my town. I also have a commercial construction background for 45 years as an estimator and project manager. First off, on term limits, there is no excuse to allow council members to skate into another term without earning their place there. And that will, should be decided by the people in an election. This position, like all of us in the real world experience, we do the best job we can and show positive results. If we fail to meet these criteria, we will be fired. City council members are no different. They have to earn their position. They serve at the pleasure of the residents of Broomfield. As far as rezoning, the, the resolution for rezoning to, to allow the city council and peers to make the decision about rezoning without informing people is not right. You already, you, you said in one meeting that you informed the people that had the, that bought the houses that are going, that are being built or already built where the three, 3-million-gallon water towers are supposed to be. I read the meeting minutes for some of those meetings about the water towers. The citizens said that they were not alerted by the city that those water towers were being built there. They were also not told by the developer that those water towers were being placed there. And in the meeting minutes from the city council, they said it wasn't the city council's or the city's responsibility to know- or the city's responsibility to notify the citizens of any zoning changes or any building that was going on. I do not think that is right, although you say that you do notify people. I don't think that's right. It's disingenuous for the city to allow high rises to go up. It's disingenuous to state something and not do it. Rezoning should be available in a public domain. It should be in the newspaper. It should be online. It should be in both places. I don't think that you should have your publication of ordinances only on a website. My mother and other, she's 93, they do not go on the internet. They read the newspapers. They read flyers that come in their mail. I think that's the appropriate way to do. Younger people may read the internet, but I don't think younger people go on the internet to look up city projects.
Can you please wrap up? Your time's expired.
I also, I think that pretty much, that pretty much does it. Thank you.
Very much. Next.
Good evening, Lois Vander Coy, first filing. And I'm going to speak spontaneously as well as I can. I think there's some confusion going on because as I heard what was happening, at first you were gonna do like a one ballot question and then it was unbundled because there was disagreement with parts of what was proposed. And so, and then I believe staff is, are the ones that brought these as high priority. So, and then council discussed that. So I don't think that this council is as power hungry as some of you are indicating. You know, they've been working really hard and we live in a much larger city than when I moved here in 97. Things have changed at many levels and it's a very complicated job. And they're doing the best they can to work with staff to move Broomfield forward in addressing major issues like water, environmental stewardship, climate change even, although some of you may not believe in that. But, you know, our world is changing and this charter needs to be updated. And it seems like these are reasonable amendments that people can vote on. If you don't like them, you can vote on them. And, you know, in terms of the term limits, I'm kind of mixed about that, but knowing how hard it is to get people to run for council, why not let people run again? I mean, they could still be voted out. It's hard to find candidates who can do this job and put the time in at a low pay while they're working other jobs or don't have other income. As to diversity, you know, this is the most diverse council we've had. Really. Young, old, old white guys. People of color, you know, and a mayor who's a woman. So, but, you know, it's really up to the voters to vote for who they want and these are the people that were voted on. So, you know, they're, they're hardworking, you know, they're becoming more professional, I think, in doing this work because there's a lot to learn. And there's a long learning curve in terms of what they're dealing with. I mean, how many of you know how this zoning works? I mean, it's very legal and they have great legal staff. So they're always in there talking with the legal staff to do what's constitutional and by ordinance or by code. So I don't know that you have so much to worry about. You can vote no if you don't like any of these ordinances, but seems like they're money-saving to me and efficient and...
Dr. Vander Coy, can you please wrap up?
Yes, goodbye.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi again, my name's Neil Alair. I'm in Broomfield Heights, first filing in Ward Two. And I want to address specifically the term limits. And I've been in the past just opposed to term limits and our, a couple of parts of our federal government have shown me that something is needed. And so I think the three terms is fine. It is a complex job. If, I wouldn't run in the first place, but I don't think I'd really want to do 12 years up there doing what you do. It's hard and complicated. So I'm in favor of that and the rest I'm also in favor of. I do want to address, because it's come up a few times, your pay, even though you're not addressing that tonight, and how it relates to what Ms. Hammer Schmidt was talking about with diversity. More, more than half, I'm sure probably three fourths or more of people who otherwise could run for City Council cannot run for City Council because they can't afford it. And I think paying anyone who does something for me as, as city servants, you should get paid an actual salary, a reasonable salary. And that allows people either in single income families or who rely on both incomes, two incomes, to also participate actively as council members, whereas right now they cannot. So that really limits not just a spec, a wide, what? It eliminates poor people. It eliminates our, what's our median income in the city, $60,000 or something? And you make maybe 20?
Double.
So anyway, I think that is important when it does come up later. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Roxy Julah Lockmore. First of all, 2243 is just a political way of being able to stay here longer for whoever it accomplishes anything for. But it doesn't accomplish anything for the city and county of Broomfield and its residents. We don't need you any longer than what we have already asked you to come for. And as far as voting for people, for years, different council people and mayors, I'll just say it that way, had nobody running against them. So all they needed was their own vote to get them into office. So I don't want to hear that they, everybody was voted into office by us taxpayers because if you don't have nobody running against you, you weren't voted in. You just continued on to your, to the end of your term that you're going to end up having. So 2243 is just adding to your term. And we're not going on what was said previously. 2244, as far as rezoning by resolution, I don't mind that as long as it only has to do with the city and county property. Otherwise, I think it needs to go through the full form of people being notified. The publications, like they said before, $30,000 is a drop in the hat. You guys go through that in 30 days on your own budgets and stuff. So that's, that's not a big thing. If you really want to notify your residents, and I mean, at least give them all a chance, let them read the little paper or let them read something besides trying to get to somebody's computer because it's not going to happen. So your residents have a right to be notified. So that one, that's going to go whichever way you want. The other ones are legal binding ordinances and they probably do need to be cleaned up. And we need to grow up a little bit on taking care of our, our employees of our city and our judicial responsibilities. That needs to be cleaned up too. But remember I said employees. Council is a volunteer. You're not meant to stay here forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Patty from Broomfield Heights in Broomfield, that neighborhood. I've been in the same house for 25 years. So been around since Broomfield was a city. And now Broomfield is a city and a county. Sometimes that means some changes need to be made. And so that's why I'm here to support, to pay increase for the council. It is just absolutely ridiculous, the pay. And if you look at the pay of, this was just from Google, if you look at county commissioner average, so that being an average and not a median value of a county commissioner in Colorado, it said June 29, 2024, 189,597 or $91 an hour. So, you know, what the council makes here in contrast is just, you know, a penny. So, you know, this is just also a figure from Google, but 457 million dollar budget was approved in 2022 for Broomfield. That's a half a billion dollars, billion dollars budget. And that median income, which means that half households are over that and half of the households are less than that, and Broomfield is over $100,000. So given all these different figures, I think we definitely can afford to pay our city council more. They do a lot of hard work and it's certainly not a volunteer position. I mean, it's, it's work. I mean, not to say that volunteering isn't work, but I mean. And as Neil Alair pointed out, certainly you would have, have more diverse candidates running and a wide variety of people running than just people that are just doing it as a volunteer kind of thing with very low pay kind of thing. So that is some comments I wanted to make there. As far as the comments about the Constitution and things like that, I mean, I generally think that the Constitution is an absolutely wonderful document. And all of that. So, you know, local control is also quite good because it gives the local people the chance to really weigh in. So anyway, just a couple of general comments. But basically going back to the main crux of this is that I support raising the pay for the council members. And you will see lower, lower levels of corruption, I believe, also with raising the pay, just because you won't only get people who are politically connected to all these super rich people or whatever, I don't know, like a good old boys, if you want to call it, I don't know what you call it. So you will have less corruption if you raise, raise the pay as well.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please wrap up? Your time's expired, so just finish your thought.
So yeah, I, I support increasing the pay for the council members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Portem, City Council, City Staff. My name is Kim Tui Cindy Pontai and I am from The Outlook. And I, I will be quite brief. In general, I, I support all of these resolutions. I think, given that city staff has recommended them as, you know, these are the things that will make a big difference and we should act on them, I trust their judgment. And I think that making things more efficient and bringing them up to date is always a good thing. I, I think publishing on the website instead of a newspaper makes sense, given that, you know, everything is on the internet, every... Granted, there are, there are some people who are not connected to the internet yet, but definitely that is the way of the future. I can't even get access to the enterprise unless I go to the library. So, you know, and for many people, they get the internet access at the library as well. But internet is everywhere. It makes sense to have things consistently on the internet. In terms of term limits, anybody who is crazy enough to sign up to three consecutive terms and run for an election and get voted in, I think they should have that opportunity if that, if that makes sense. You know, I, I haven't seen anything specifically on changing term limits for mayor and pay increases. Perhaps those are coming up in future, in future meetings, but I think, you know, those, those things make sense. I think for as much work as you guys do and the size of the budget that you're dealing with and the amount of due diligence that has to happen for all of these, you know, we want the best qualified, most engaged people possible to do the best jobs for us. And you are elected in. And so, you know, it is the voice of the people. You guys run in elections and we vote and it represents who we are as a town. And not everybody may agree with that because you may have a diversity of opinion, but the truth is, if you win an election, you won the election and it was the voters who put you there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Brett Baldwin from the Broadlands. Really didn't have an intention on speaking tonight until I heard a number of things. And in ordinance 2243, you know, if it's, I, I don't see why we really need to change this if we've been following what the state does as a whole. Regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, I view city council as a civil servant position, not, you know, a career politician or anything in that regard, if that's what you're looking for. You can go to the Senate and then make your way up to DC if that's really what you're trying to do. But at the end of the day, we do have these term limits for a reason. You ran on certain issues. You said you were gonna put the community's best interest for your ward and you have a time limit to fulfill that obligation or what you ran on. Not sure why we're talking about extending it. I really don't think it's necessary. I think there's an adequate time to fulfill what you ran on in the current structure that we have. There was a lot of comment on council pay doing well with the budget. I'm actually pretty concerned with the budget from a financial background. As many of you know, Councilman Lindsted, he is no longer here. You know, he's moved on from Broomfield City Council onto bigger and better, well, big. I will say other things, not bigger and better, but he has moved on and I do believe the vast majority of this council spent a large amount of their time talking about pay and how it would be increased moving forward. Did we not do that while he was here? Pretty sure we did. Talking about pay increases, nobody forced you to run for City Council. It's a civil servant position. Nobody made you take it. Talking about a little bit of land tonight and, oh, we've done such a great job. About a month and a half ago, Broomfield and this council was talking about, hey, we're gonna get rid of some of our commercial land and you know what? We're gonna use it as residential. We don't have an unlimited amount of commercial land to develop. We have certain areas. But yet numerous people on this council, they didn't have a problem with that. A little concerned. A little concerned. It's different tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard in person? If not, we'll move to our folks on the phone. We have two folks on the phone, so we're gonna go to our phone callers now. And Dave, you are next. You have three minutes.
Thank you and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Dave Clemens and I've lived in Ward 4, Redleaf subdivision since uh, 2010 and have really come to love this county. And uh, although I'm not enamored of the politics as of late, I would like to extract opinions and concerns in particular about ordinances 2243 and 2244. Overall, with the five uh, CCOB ballot measures and approximately nine from the state, this ballot's gonna be overwhelming to the voters this fall. So I think we should be sensitive to that. Uh, ordinance 2243 in particular term limits, I'm concerned by the recent activity of the council and the charter review committee that seeks to turn our council from a collection of civic-minded public servants to a seat for professional politicians by extending term limits. This is not in the best interest of the voters of Broomfield, I feel. Three, four-year term limits will definitely turn council members into professional politicians. Council members will claim, as they have before, and I've heard many times uh, this spoken in previous uh, sessions, that they will not be able to hold another full-time job, um, and then they will want higher pay to compensate for that. Personally, I don't care so much about the high pay um, as I do about making our small county just another political entity. I believe you should be better compensated for your time than you are now. But I think reasonable term limits serve the interests of the people as opposed to the interests of professional politicians. The present term limits are just fine the way they are and are consistent with state law. So this is not needed and shouldn't be on the ballot and is not in the interest of Broomfield residents. Uh, ordinance 2244, rezoned by resolution. This one is particularly concerning to me because many years ago, I was involved in a zoning issue while living in Lewisville that directly affected my neighborhood and my property value. The developers wanted one thing and it was clear that the impacted neighbors wanted something completely different and that what the developers were gonna do was really gonna hurt our property values. Rezoning can dramatically impact property owners and all public comments should be allowed, addressed, and uh, solicited and not be rushed. It's my understanding this ordinance would significantly limit the amount of time and opportunities for public comment, and that's not in our best interests. I encourage you to not put this on the ballot. I'd like to thank you for your consideration of my, of my comments and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to you, Jan. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and the city staff. My name is Jan Bill Sparrow. I'm a Redleaf resident uh, for the last 10-plus years. I'm asking you to not put ordinance 2245 regarding publication of ordinances on the website on the ballot. And I know that you support transparency, providing information about important city actions, and I know you intend to reach all segments of our community. In the community survey, here's some additional information. It states on page 32 of that survey, the Broomfield Enterprise newspaper tended to be a more frequent source of information for residents of Ward 3 than from other residents. It also states in the detail related to the question about major news sources, that the Broomfield Enterprise newspaper was responded to by 62% of those people making less than $100,000 per year. So the overall amount of respondents was 58%, indicating this is a source of information for them. And for those with lesser income, it was as much as 62%. I certainly also think it's good to have it on the Broomfield website. I think it's good to have information through signage and through other medias to encourage all people to know about important issues. It took me six clicks to get to the ordinances that are being discussed tonight. I'm curious how many clicks it will take as people want to know what's going on in terms of these important city issues. So it's good to have a wide array of ways to share information with the community. It's important to reach senior citizens, people without computers, and those who happen to read a print newspaper. I know that this ordinance allows for posting on the enterprise, but we know that once it is optional, it could be very likely that it would not happen. So please consider dropping this ordinance from the ballot. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I'll do one last call for in-person comments, but now we have, we're at the two-minute mark. Would anyone else like to be heard before we move forward? And that is all. Um, so questions from city council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion and the time to introduce amendments for or against this item or state positions is later. Uh, are there any questions from council? Uh, Mayor Protem Shaw?
Just a point of order, Mayor. Uh, it's, uh, looking at the time, it's eight o'clock. Uh, can we take our 10-minute break now before we get?
Thank you so much for noticing that. I was in my zone. So yes, I appreciate that. Um, it's eight o'clock. We'll be back in 10 minutes at 8:10. Thank you all. Could everyone please take their seats? Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you all. We're gonna go ahead and get started with part two of our meeting. So can you please take your side conversations outside or wrap them up? Thank you. So we were last starting our questions from council. And members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any council questions, Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mitch. Uh, I just want to say how much I appreciate everybody's coming and the diverse opinions that have been expressed here. That's what we all want, to hear different views and perspectives to help us make better decisions. And so the calls, phone calls and emails we get in addition to people's comments on council are, are very much appreciated by all of us. And I just want to, you to know that we're grateful for your taking the time to be here. I do want to ask Ms. Rogers a couple of questions. Um, I think there's misunderstandings about the ordinance change uh, regarding the, the zoning. Um, the change from ordinance to um, uh, council, um, what's the term?
Resolution.
Resolution, thank you. Um, doesn't change any of the input that the public will have regarding knowing about the proposed change, giving input about the post-change, et cetera. Am I correct?
You are. Thank you for that council, that question, Councilmember Leslie. All the notice-
All the notice requirements that are existing in our code are still there. The requirement that land use application would go to LERC first for their public meeting is still there. It would definitely and always have to come to a public hearing at council, which means there's always going to be public comment. There's no, this would not impact Brimfield Voice and the engagement that can happen on Brimfield Voice or in a person's ability to just email council directly. So, thank you for that question.
So, what's the purpose of the change that's being proposed?
So, and I'll use the WATKI rezone and comp plan amendment as an example. This came to council last week and we're rezoning the WATKI open space to match our current zone designation. In addition to that, staff is proposing a comp plan amendment. Now, those who watched the meeting last week saw a great presentation on the whole plan. Like, here's what we're planning on doing, here's what the rezone and the comp plan amendment. There's one reading for the comp plan amendment, because that can be done by resolution, and then two readings for the rezone. So, this proposal comes from the idea that it's better to have it all resolved, all addressed in one meeting and not have that secondary meeting where half the land use application, or sometimes two-thirds if you have maybe a site plan amendment, has been approved and you're just doing sort of this last step. And the only reason we do these rezones or vacation or right-of-ways by ordinance instead of resolution is because of this provision in the charter. Or else, like the other pieces of land use applications, like site plan amendments, we would do them by resolution.
So, it's essentially an efficiency?
It is an efficiency suggestion.
Distracting from the public's right for engagement and involvement and commentary, et cetera.
Yes, I would agree.
Alright, thank you. I want to make a comment about, well, let me ask a question, I guess. I'm not supposed to make comments. Can I make comments?
No, wait till discussion.
Wait, okay. So, let me just ask about the ordinance relating to the newspaper and the website. Staff is making that recommendation to us primarily, as I understand it, because of efficiency again. Unfortunately, the number 30,000 was made, but then everybody kind of grabbed onto that, you know? Well, that's only 30,000. And of course, we often get criticized if we say only 30,000, because then people will say, "My god, that's $30,000," right? And of course, the point is that that's only one incident, that the example that was given was representing that one incident that had to come before the newspaper several times as the hearings happened, et cetera. And given my previous experience as a public institution, also having to let the public know about various conversations and bond elections and all those kinds of things, we moved very deliberately away from the newspapers for the same reason. The cost was just extraordinary. And there are a few people that still don't use the internet, but most people, and I do take exception that when someone says older people don't use the internet, I struggle with it a bit, but I do ask for help from time to time. But my expectation is that staff is perceiving that this will not, in fact, diminish the public's awareness of various issues that have to come, that are required for us to make public. I mean, a lot of this typically has been in the law. State law would require that certain things be shared with the public, and so you have to publish in certain states that I've been in, you had to publish in so many different newspapers, and in some areas you had to publish in different kinds of newspapers or different kinds of media. Again, all with the purpose of making sure that the public was aware. But my understanding of this proposal again is that the use of the newspapers, the cost of the newspapers and the readership of the newspapers has declined so much that putting it on our website is the better solution. And I'm conscious of the comment made by one of the callers that it took her six clicks to get to something. So clearly, there may need to be some improvement so that things are more accessible more easily for us to know. But is there any other reason that staff had recommended to make this change?
I'd like to sort of piggyback on one of the public comments. And I do not know the situation on the Brimfield enterprise, but watching local newspapers across this nation, I have to agree with Mr. Ewald that there is a risk that the Brimfield enterprise will not be in existence in the future, and we don't know what's going on with the camera or even the Post. I mean, I grew up reading the Rocky Mountain News, which I still miss to this day, because I like the book format. So, one of the issues here, and again, I think the ordinance idea is a great one, this is locked in charter. That's one of the challenges right now. So, part of this recommendation is just coming out of the wish of, can we not have this locked in charter? So, we have a little flexibility. But we want the public to know that, consistent with our state law, which was modified to allow publication on websites that the local government chooses, we will commit to making sure we publish our ordinances after they're passed. But that fear of, will there be newspapers in 20 years when we do the next charter review? Or will be locked into finding a local newspaper? So, that is definitely one of the reasons.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Next is Councilmember Marsh Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions, Ms. Rogers. On the rezoning by resolution one, our current practice right now is that we, generally speaking, we do the like site development plan resolution and the first reading of the ordinance together. And then we kind of have to go back and do the second reading of the ordinance at a later date. Is that?
It depends. I mean, the example of WATKI, we actually are saving the resolution for second reading. Some of that is dependent on what's on council's plate that night, what is on the agenda, the meeting length, when the developer, if there is a developer applicant, when they can get their team here. So, it's a procedural thing that we do, we've done it both ways.
Okay. Because I do understand, I do am sympathetic, and not sympathetic is the wrong word, but I do advocate for as much public engagement as possible. So, I do kind of, I do understand the idea of having two readings, but could we make it policy to swap those and always have the, any resolutions on the second reading of the ordinance if we were not to change the charter, I guess is the question?
That could be something, you know, a lot of our procedures on land use applications are set forth in our code. So, that could be something that council could add by ordinance in the code. I will say, from a staff perspective, we appreciate the flexibility now. As you all know, our planning staff works with applicants for years, a year, two years to get something to the time when it comes to you. So, we like the flexibility, but if council desires an ordinance like that, that could be, council could do that through a future action.
And then the question, follow-up question, and that's for you or Ms. Hoffman. What's the impact to staff and developers right now under our current bifurcated system where we have to have two readings? Do the developers have to pay for their attorneys to come both times? How does that work?
Yes, they do. So, primarily, it's a, we didn't see it as a substantive change. We certainly didn't see it as rolling back any type of notification. That would be the last, that would be the last thing that we would recommend doing, even having the intent in order to do that. We've heard over the last two years, particularly as council's agendas, we're coming up on the next four meetings being six-plus hours. So, any methodology to not necessarily, I mean, streamlining council's agenda is really number three. First and foremost, it was to streamline the process, continue to have the public be able to weigh in on it and provide some certainty for timelines for our developers.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question on this, Ms. Rogers. What do other communities do in regards to this?
It's very dependent, and I don't have any specifics, so I wouldn't ask. I'll tell you from the previous community I worked with, we had, we had certain charter requirements on land use. It was dependent on the type of application. So, especially when you're looking at home rules, it's very dependent on their charter and code.
Thank you. And then moving on to the publication by resolution, or publication in the paper, sorry, or website, you know what I meant, sorry. Can you go into a little more detail on what the publication in the enterprise looks like? Do we take out an ad with, you know, big bullets? Or where do we, where's it go in the paper?
No, we can grab one, because I'm sure we have a legal notice in there. It's at the back pages, it's in the legal notices section, and it's typically done in four, four or six columns, and it just lists the text. There are no graphics.
Okay. I was aware of that, I wanted to specify for the public. You know, I'm a lawyer and I have never once read the legal notices in the local paper. And I read the enterprise every week, so that's just a aside. Now, if, under our current charter, can we, could we not publish the entire ordinance and just publish like a QR code or a link with the title of the ordinance? Can we do that specifically now?
I would advise against it. I think the charter right now is very specific that the ordinance must be published in full in a paper of general circulation on first reading, and then it can be published by title after second reading and final approval.
But if we were to make this change, we could then publish in the newspaper the title, maybe a QR code to the website where it is, or the link, or however we do that.
Yes, and that could all be established by ordinance or just by policy.
Okay. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, Mayor Protem Shaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just one general question. So, we heard from our public tonight about how all these ordinances are grouped within one agenda item, it only provides one public opportunity for the second reading on these. Will these items be broken apart into different agenda items? Or again, will they be all one item?
I can do it whatever way council would like, if they'd like to separate it out. I was taking a page out of the playbook of our other multi-item matters where we try to group everything together under one number, but I'm happy to do it whatever way council would like.
Okay, great, thanks. I just, I think that, you know, we'll probably have some comments on that later, but thank you for answering that question at this point. You know, for those people, residents as well as council members that didn't attend the June study session, were these ballot issues and questions were moved forward, were these ballot issues at the request of staff, council, or both? And maybe some of them were staff-driven and some were council-driven?
All of the items have a CRC recommendation, and the term limits was CRC recommendation, as were the other ones. Term limits wasn't a staff priority, that really is something, you know, for council and the public to decide. The others were staff priorities.
Right, thank you for that.
In addition to the election question.
Thank you. And the last question I have, you know, I wish that a member of the development community was here to kind of talk about the rezoning process and what this looks like. We do have a member of the community development team here, I don't know if Manager Hoffman, if we can have them explain the process for a development, that rezoning change and how this ballot question addresses some of those complications for both developers, residents as well, staff.
Certainly be happy to. Ms. Burton Zetti? Who after tonight is going to, starting on August 1st, be our interim deputy city-county mayor, manager. Not sure any of us want to be up on that dais on that side.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, Anna Burton Zetti, co-director of Community Development and Planning Director. So, our rezoning process, my understanding of the question, you just wanted kind of a brief overview. So, if there is a rezoning, sometimes it often comes with a site development plan or a PUD plan with it. That's the most common scenario for Brimfield. In those circumstances, we require a neighborhood meeting, we require a concept review if it's also coming through with a site development plan or a planned unit development at the same time. We set up a Brimfield Voice page, so there's engagement through the Brimfield Voice. We do a technical review of the application at a staff level. And when we feel like all of the technical requirements are met and that it's ready for consideration, it goes to the land use review commission for consideration, and then it comes to the city council. As it's established today, it comes to a first reading with the city council. The first reading is not a public hearing. It is not advertised. Sometimes, we used to put them on even just the consent agenda. It is to notify the community that there is going to be a consideration of the ordinance. And it's reviewed and approved at first reading, then a public hearing is scheduled for that second reading. That meeting is noticed. So, we provide mailed letters to property owners within 1,000 feet, there's a sign posted on the property, and as written, it has a notice in the paper. And then that is also considered the public hearing for typically the site development plan and the PUD plan. So, that's the way we're currently doing it. But as was noted by Councilmember Marsh Holschen, sometimes we'll do the consideration of the public hearing at the first reading and then do another public hearing that's just for the rezoning afterwards. But at that point, it's still only one public hearing for the rezoning. It's just that that discussion for the rezoning is happening at a separate time, which is why it gets a little bit confusing.
Thank you for that explanation. So, none of the notification or the public participation changes with this ballot question if it were to be approved by the voters? There is still all of those elements that would still exist if it was by resolution instead?
That's correct. Since we don't do the publication or any notices for a first reading, all of the notification requirements are actually exactly the same.
And you've been in this role or a similar role for quite some time. Do you often, have you seen that there is, there is a large amount of public comment both at the first reading and the second reading? Or is there primarily public comment at one of those two readings for the ordinances for rezoning?
That also influences where we put the public hearing. So, if we have a project where there's been lots of public interest, we're seeing lots of engagement on Brimfield Voice, we've had residents come to the land use review commission, sometimes at that point, we will advertise the public hearing and have that with the first reading so that the largest discussion regarding the site plan, which is usually where all the comments are really focused, is on the design of the site and how the building functions. So, we'll have that with the first reading, so that's advertised. And the primary discussion and the decisions regarding the site plan are made, subject to the condition that the rezoning is then approved also at the second hearing. So, then there's a secondary conversation, but the big decision regarding the site plan or the planned unit development entitlement will have already been made at the first reading. And I think that's where we often hear some concern with, with feeling like that second reading then is kind of the hanging chat.
Well, I think, I thank you for all of your information that you've shared with us. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot. Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, wonderful presentation, and thank you for walking us through. I guess my question, and this is a simple, you know, quick question. Brimfield City Council serves as both county commissioners and city council, and the only other location that serves, you know, similar roles is the Denver City Council.
Correct.
What are their term limits for city council of Denver?
I don't know.
I looked it up, and it's three.
Okay, thank you.
So, similar, you know, case for their mayor as well and for their city council, because they both serve as city council and county commissioners. And I guess my other question is going to be for, even though we're in our first reading right now, if we were to continue this process for these ordinances, what would this look like on the ballot? Or a rough idea of that?
So, the ordinances, if approved, will come to second reading on the 13th. And the ballot questions that are in the ordinance would be shared with the Secretary of State, and that's what you will see on the ballot.
That's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, so keeping this only to questions, I only have, my only question is on ordinance 2024, 2245, the publication of ordinances. And just a thought, because I actually received a phone call from someone today saying that they actually only read the published ordinances in the paper, because they do not go online. So, if there was a resident that could not view the ordinance language online, could they request a hard copy from the city? Or how could they access, is there a way that they could access that if they're not able to go online? Because I hear, you're hearing comments that that does prohibit some individuals, and maybe, maybe something we can put some thought into of.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. And then similarly to the, similarly to the elections question earlier, could we bring forward an ordinance that solidifies our publishing process? And that would take effect if the ballot question passes?
Yes.
Okay. So, that would be helpful, and that could include Councilmember Marsh Holschen's suggested of title and QR code. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Councilmember Lim.
I had some clarification questions based on public comment. There was a question from a resident as to why the city did not prioritize the language to change where it just says "city" to "city" and "county." And just from my perspective, that's not what the staff prioritize, I can confirm that. But do you have any reason for not prioritizing that?
Yes, when, when, after the unbundling and repeal and replace discussion and the focus being on being on substantive charter changes, the focus from staff was on those charter changes that would actually have an operational effect. And while I'm definitely in support of changing city to city and county throughout, we do have a current provision in our charter that says, anywhere where it says city, it means city and county. It was passed after 2001. That's just, that is a cleanup. It is not needed for our day-to-day operations. It would be, we've heard concern about additional ballot questions when we already have a very long ballot. It just didn't seem to be, if we were going to be limited in our choices, that's one of the first ones to go.
Okay, thank you. This is another clarification question based on public comments. Is there anything in our ordinances this evening that addresses council compensation?
No, no, there is no pay question going to the ballot. The way the charter is currently written, it says council sets, council has to set its compensation by ordinance. Charter Review Committee recognized a need for an increased compensation, but they didn't recommend any changes to that provision. That is not on deck this evening.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the publication in a newspaper, it's, it's my experience that the, receiving the Brimfield Enterprise is not universal in, throughout the city. Does, does staff have any information on that?
I don't know. Antecdotally, yes. We know that, that they're, they don't deliver to all the places they used to deliver, but I don't have their circulation numbers or locations or map.
Councilmember Lim, if I may add, it wasn't too long ago, so we used to get, just my neighborhood, got the enterprise on Thursdays and Sundays. And then they reduced to just Sundays. So that's, that's part of the, I mean, these staff changes are, it's an interesting question that one of the residents brought up between a need and a want. So from a clarification perspective, or from a number perspective, while this is a worthy conversation to have and a forward thinking, what happens if it does? I think having that caveat in, particularly for these, for the postings, is something that we can be open to modifying without creating additional measures for, for the, for an already long ballot. So again, from the, from the staff, from the staff perspective, the most important was the election, 31 and one. But it's councils on the, on the recall piece. So.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick clarification, if I could, Ms. Rogers. My understanding is, if this passes 2245, it just gives us the option to publish the newspaper we choose to. So we could adopt a policy when that applies, correct?
Correct.
Does it also give us the option to summarize? I mean, if I understand correctly, we print the whole thing, a very long description of the ordinance in the, as a former newspaper reporter and paginator, it's called agit type, and when I was 22, I could read it, and now I can't, as the resident old white guy on the dais. But we have the option of not printing the full ordinance, but putting a summary and referring people to a website or some other source for more information.
Yes, if the question passes, yes.
We do have that option.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions from council?
My only question is, I was trying to look up what defines general circulation, because this is a problem that is happening everywhere. Some, some towns don't even have an enterprise that, you know, only half of us may get. They have to publish in other counties, you know? So it's, it's really kind of a, it's a thing that we're all going to have to figure out sooner or later, because it's a loose definition. General circulation, there's not really a definition of like what the, what the circulation should be.
No, there is not.
In order to make sure you're actually getting the message out.
Right, right.
I saw, I'm just pondering, like, what is the circulation of this paper that I don't get anymore in the broadlands?
Right, if it even meets the requirement of general circulation, and do we have to look at the post?
Other publications.
Which then, for the argument of dollars, would be substantially more expensive than the $20,000 to $30,000 a year.
Okay, that, I think that's the only question I have. What is general circulation? Not what it used to be. All right, so questions are done. We're all done with that. Next is council's consideration of the proposed ordinances. We'll take each ordinance one at a time. So will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title, which is 2243 term limits?
Ordinance number 2243, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Brimfield at the coordination, coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. Proposed amendments to Chapter 4 of, Section 4.3 of the Brimfield Charter to set term limits for elected officials.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2243 on first reading, and ordered published in full, and that a second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August 13th, 2024? Councilmember Leslie?
I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. As I was unable to attend the study session in late June, when these specific ballot measures, issues were moved forward by council, my next meeting to discuss the ballot questions is occurring tonight. Although I did express my concern with about expanded term limits in previous study sessions, with the first reading occurring tonight, the opportunity for amendments to ordinance is best done tonight. So, Mayor, at this point, I have my amendment, if I can introduce that. It looks like it's proposed on the screen. Per council rules and procedures, Parliament do rule 3.3 amendments to resolutions and ordinances. Below is my amendment for ordinance 2243, a seven amendment at 11:52 AM on Monday, July 8th, 2024. After a conversation with Attorney Rogers, it was suggested I make a tweak to my amendment, which is in line with past practice from council members. Here's my tweaked amendment. No mayor or council member shall serve more than two consecutive terms in office, except that with respect to terms of office, which are two years or shorter in duration, no such elected official shall serve more than three consecutive terms in office. Currently, there is no language in our Brimfield Charter concerning term limits. We follow the state constitution around term limits. This amendment would establish the state, state language that's in the constitution, as mentioned in the amendment in our Brimfield Charter. I also disagree with a Brimfield elected official serving three, four-year terms. As I question my colleagues who are wanting this change, why stop at three? Why stop at, why stop at three? What is so significant about three? Why not just remove term limits completely? I will state that a two, four-year term is a lot of time for a Brimfield elected office, official to serve. With an additional term, what more will be offered for the benefit of the Brimfield community? There is a benefit to having new ideas and new perspectives represented in our Brimfield elected officials. Heck, some of you can't even wait till I'm termed off in council in November 2025. I believe this ballot question creates short-term confusion in the November election. It complicates the ability for other ballot measures to pass and could have unintended consequences with an elected official serving upwards of 24 years in elected office. I hope you will support this amendment, as I cannot support the current ballot question in the council memo. So, Mayor, that is the amendment that I put forward.
All right, thank you. So we have an amendment from Councilmember Schaaf. Is there a second? Councilmember Lim?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Henkel had her hand up first, so I'm going to go up to Councilmember Henkel and then Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this pretty short. I also want to clarify, someone in the audience who spoke to, it sounded like the gentleman said we only serve five years. Sorry.
Hurricane.
And a person could serve eight currently. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that. I just want to clarify, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Your, your audio was very.
There is a gentleman who just said that we, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but it's garbled. So a lot of what you said.
Okay.
Couldn't understand. So you want to?
I'm here.
Okay. Try again, if you can.
I can hear you. I turned off my video. Is that better?
Yeah, you sound clear now. Can you start over?
Okay. I'll try again. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, you sound clear.
I'll try again now.
Now you don't.
Is that better?
It's, it's kind of.
Okay, I turned off my video.
Okay.
Yes. There was a gentleman who said we only serve.
No, you cut out now. She's in Texas. There's a hurricane. Okay.
Do you want me to just call in? Can you hear me now?
Is there, yeah, but the audio's unstable. If I had to tell you what's going on, it's very unstable. So I don't know if we can do a Lim?
Could I type it to someone and they could just say it?
Do you want to hang up and call again? Is that, is that possible?
Um, yes, I can. Yeah, I can do that.
Look, I'm getting a million cues now. So what are we doing?
Councilmember Henkel, instead of using the link, there's a telephone number. So just hang up and call the telephone number, and we'll be able to patch you in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I got it.
Go ahead and go to James while you reconnect. I mean, Councilmember Marsh Holson. Thank you. Sorry about that, y'all. Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a recommendation from the Charter Review Committee. Five of the seven were members of the, of the community, residents, and two council members. But this was a majority vote by the Charter Review Committee to recommend this change. This is not something that is unprecedented. Many other communities in our, in Colorado have changed their term limits. Denver is three. Loveland City Council has no term limits. Not that I think that's necessarily a good idea, but, so this is not, is not unprecedented. This is, this is not us deciding to go forward with term limits. This is us asking the voters if they want to go forward with change in term limits. We all ran for office, we all were elected, which means the voters, the majority of the voters, supported the platforms we put forward. If the majority of the voters vote for a ballot question to expand term limits, then the majority of the voters support that change. So that's all that this is. This is not us making the change. This is us asking, putting it for the voters to decide what the voters want. So for that reason, I do not support this amendment. I will be voting no. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Henkel, did you get back in? Not yet? Okay, we'll move on to Councilmember Cohen. Keep me posted. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we did that. We're doing that. Thank you. We're trying to, it's okay. Yeah, we're going.
Just to, back when Councilmember Marsh Holson was saying that nobody on council brought this forward, this was brought by the Charter Committee and is asking us to ask the people to vote for it. And just to respond to Councilmember Schaaf, I don't know if there's a magic number. I personally don't think term limits have achieved, with term limits proponents hoped they would, in terms of better governance or less corruption or something that I think they had the opposite effect. I wanted to just give you a quote. It says, "Nothing renders government more unstable than a frequent change of persons of administrative." And that was by Roger Sherman, who has signed the Declaration of Independence. So it's not a new issue. It's been around for a very long time, and has been seen as a solution to what ails our government. But I would think that a good argument against is to look at our legislature, which is required, which is a bit of a turnstile now, with people being forced out just as soon as they develop some expertise. And the effect of that is it has empowered lobbyists immensely. They are the ones basically running the show down there, if you really look at the legislature, because there are so few legislators who have enough experience to run the place. As soon as they know what they're doing, they're termed out. And I think that defies, denies voters a choice. There is a skill to doing legislative work. There's a skill to administering government. I can't imagine what the Manager Hoffman's life was like if she had to term out her department heads every 10 years. Nope, you're out. Just as you got good at it, we have to turn you out, just arbitrarily. So I think, and I know we're also going to be asked, I think, on the ballot this fall whether to give three terms to the DA for this county, who presently has two terms, who's running unopposed for a second term. DA is a pretty special requirement, explicit skill as well. And I can't imagine turning out DA Mason and his experience simply because he met up against an arbitrary rule. So I would argue, I don't think this achieves anything. I don't, if the Charter Committee wants, thinks there's value in having three terms, let the voters decide that. It won't affect me. I don't think it'll affect anybody here on the council, and to the discussions that somehow you amass more power after a second term and a third term. I don't, I'm still looking for what that power may be that I can amass. Please point me in the right direction. But I would oppose this. I think the Charter Committee made a recommendation that's honor it and let the voters decide.
Thank you. Okay, checking on Councilmember Henkel before I move on. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yay. Sorry, you guys. I'm in a hurricane zone in Texas right now, but thought I'd, you know, call in of the goodness of my heart, because I do serve and I'm proud of serving. I just wanted to clarify, there was a gentleman in the audience who said we only serve four years. While that is true per term, we don't necessarily are voted out of four years. I did beat an incumbent who did serve only four years, so the voters spoke. So every time we say that there's a term, the voters always have a voice. So to piggyback on what Councilmember Marsh Holson was talking about, I feel like that's important. So if voted back in, we could serve eight. If we had a council, then commissioner role, we could serve five terms in total, like Adams County, where people could run for Westminster City Council, and then Adams County, and then they're serving 20 years. So I think 12 years is a good compromise, like Sandy Anderson said, out of Ward Four. And I do want to just clarify, too, additionally, we aren't talking about pay tonight. If we ever do discuss pay, it pertains to those who are in the audience, and I'll address that later. But I just wanted to address term limits now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I am slightly just, I'm slightly confused here, because we've got, I'm looking at the, pulling up the actual language here. We have the language remaining of the two-year and four-year terms going back to 1977, and why would we not be striking that out as we're adding in the terms exactly as we have them today? And I'm actually okay to, I can vote yes on this, but I would actually, I would still vote no on the overall ordinance, because I don't think this is a priority that should go forward right now, because as was pointed out, this is not, I think the Mayor Protem made it pretty clear that he's not really thinking about a third term here, and there's no one up for election for a couple of years that would even be seeking a third term. So I would rather focus on the other ballot initiatives. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lim?
I respect the work of the Charter Committee. They did have a huge task, but I don't agree with this, this extension of the council to three terms. I think that after one term, the council member has gained enough experience to make full use of that second term, and that after that second term, that someone else should be given an opportunity to run. And those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendments? Councilmember Leslie?
Yeah, I, I struggle with this a little bit, because again, the voters have the opportunity to make a decision each time an individual runs for election. But at the same time, I think all of us are frustrated by the duration of many of those who serve, particularly in the federal level, and wish that there would be something that could be done there. I've generally been opposed to extending these limits, and so I've also felt, and expressed myself here publicly, that I'm concerned about this particular election. And I'd hate for other things to go down, because individuals might be opposed to one particular element of it. So I'm inclined to vote. inclined to vote against, uh, extending the, um, term limits uh, for those reasons. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Leslie, did you hit your button again?
I did. I keep doing it.
Okay, and that's good. Okay, so, um, that wraps up the discussion. So we're going to vote on the amendment. So council, please cast your vote on the amendment electronically. Councilmember Henkel, please state your vote verbally.
My vote is no.
Can the amendment be put on the screen, please?
Uh, okay, can we put the amendment on the screen? It's, they're working on it. Okay. Did you wanna vote or wait till the amendment's on the screen to vote? You wanted to read it? Okay. Well, then we'll give you a moment. All right, so council members ca- cast your vote. All council members have entered their vote. And the results will be displayed on the screen. And that fails six to four. All right, so now we'll return to the discussion on the ordinance as a whole. Seeing, are there any other discussion on the ordinance as a whole? Not seeing any, seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2243. Um, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, please state your vote verbally.
My vote is yes.
Okay. So, go ahead. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed and that passes six to four. So, moving on. Next is council's consideration of ordinance number 2244. That's the rezoning by resolution. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2244 submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. A proposed amendment to Chapter 4, Section 6.4 of the Broomfield Charter to permit rezones by resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2244 on first reading and published in full? Councilmember Leslie.
Move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Lim.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to staff for all the explanation of the way the public will still be involved in the process, the notification and the public hearing. So I think, um, having read the emails from the public and the public comments, I, I hope that alleviates concerns. It certainly did, uh, help in, I hope it helped alleviate those concerns. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Shaft.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So for six years and most recently this, uh, last summer, uh, you know, I've seen developments that have come across, uh, along with, uh, zoning changes. With each of these, the project is considered along with the first or second reading of the zoning ordinance. That's where the confusion comes in, is that, uh, members of the public are uncertain on what is actually being considered with that first or second reading of this, uh, of the zoning ordinance when it's considered by itself, not with that project, uh, because they still feel like the project has the ability to be turned down, and that's not what's being considered with that zoning ordinance. So I think that by having this as a resolution and a one-time hearing, uh, clarifies that for the members of the public. I think that the development community, uh, and it sounds like our staff from, uh, the questions I asked tonight, uh, will help, uh, clarify that, um, moving forward. So I do support this.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2244. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember, excuse me, Henkel, please state your vote verbally.
My vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance 2245. Uh, that is the publication of ordinances on the website. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2245 submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. A proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Section 6.9 of the Broomfield Charter permitting publication of ordinances on the Broomfield website.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2245 on first reading and published in full? Uh, Mayor Protem Shaft.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Shaft.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So when we're talking about the publication of ordinances in the Broomfield enterprise, uh, we're talking about, uh, this paper, which I brought today. And we're not talking about any of the front pages. We're talking clear in the back behind the classifieds, all the way to the back of the paper in the small itty-bitty print. Uh, lots of text here, um, nothing too flashy, but, you know, so the people that are saying that they, they want the ordinances to remain in the Broomfield enterprise, are you saying that you seriously read these that are clear back there? I mean, that's, that's my question, is that, you know, you want them in there, but are you actually reading them? Those are two different things. So if you say that, you know, that you read these ordinances online on the Broomfield, uh, enterprise site, you know, I would love to get a tutorial from you, uh, beyond how to navigate that site, because I went there today to just check to see is that a possibility? I can go online. I can't even find them online. So, you know, if you read them online, let me know. I'd love a tutorial where, how you navigate that site. Uh, so I'm gonna agree with you that the Broomfield enterprise is a source for local information on news. Uh, just even this last, uh, this last newspaper, uh, I read it front cover, except for the ordinances in the back. Um, you know, the, the local newspaper and the news sources are vital for a robust community and, and especially our democracy. There are even good reasons the Broomfield communications staff, uh, engage with readers to advertise events and pitch stories, uh, of interest to our readers. Uh, some questions for the community that, you know, I don't need answers to tonight, but I would love to hear your answers in the future. Would it be beneficial to the community if council agendas with a brief summary were included in the Broomfield enterprise? What other ways would the community like to see council business highlighted in the Broomfield enterway, enterprise? So maybe it's not so much that you want the ordinances in there, but you want the activities and announcements of what the business of council is in the Broomfield enterprise. And I think those are two very different things. And I would like to see, sorry, that was my own timer. I'm done. Uh, but I would like to see those differentiations, uh, be a conversation in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Marsholson.
Thank you, Mayor. On this one, I'm gonna agree completely with Mayor Protem, uh, Shaft. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm a lawyer and I've never once read a legal notice in the back of the paper. I once read of my Verizon agreement, but that was during law school and I was bored. Um, you know, it just, it costs money. It's not being used well. Um, we can, we can make changes where we can publish some things and, and not publish others and be more efficient and more cost-effective. Um, and then just one anecdotal note, you know, in, in campaigning for office and knocking doors in Ward One, I would estimate maybe 30% or more of the papers that are actually delivered are never picked up and just left in the gutter. So I don't know how much that are actually being read and, and to Mayor Protem Shaft, I doubt that very many people actually read the notices. So I think this is a good use of taxpayer money. So, th- thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Um, and during the questions, we got the confirmation that yes, we can bring forward an ordinance that would solidify our publishing procedure, whatever exactly that is going to be. Um, and, uh, I will, um, plan to bring that request forward unless somebody beats me to it. Um, and so we could get this ordinance moving and, um, hopefully ideally approved while in advance of, of voting starting in October, so that residents can know what that procedure via our ordinances will be. Um, so I think, uh, more to come on that one. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I am supportive of this just because this is a transparent ordinance and I think the voters would really appreciate this opportunity to have a say where they get to, you know, know about these ordinances and what the council does. Um, as a millennial, I do not use physical paper. The only paper I've ever bought was the one when the Nuggets won the, you know, the championship. So uh, I, yeah, no, I think the voters will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Henkel on the phone before you, Councilmember Cohen. Uh, Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks for this, this discussion tonight. Um, and thank you Attorney Rogers for all your hard work and the Charter Review Committee who recommended particularly this change too. Um, I wanted to use this time to sort of clarify some items here. It sounds like I, I read, uh, what the Broomfield Taxpayer Matters is sending out and there was some incorrect information. And while I don't think it's intentional, it bothers me tonight that people came to speak tonight and were given wrong information. And so I just want to clarify that, that someone condemned our budget tonight. And I just want to say that we have a healthy budget and the reason why it's larger is because we simply have more people. It's not because we're spending more than we receive. Our act, our policy actually does not allow us to do so otherwise. We are actually one of the most fiscally responsible councils. And our surrounding counties had to go to a four-day work week because they had to make hard budget decisions. The transparency along these lines is also important too. Um, it's one of my platforms. It was why I was voted in. Um, and so I do think that transparency is important. How we make that transparency, uh, even more available to people is also important. I have an email myself that I send out as a council member. I have a Facebook uh, site as well. We try to be as transparent as possible. Um, I hope you are all subscribing to the Be in the Loop emails as well. Um, and we will be saving money by not publicizing in the paper. So it's confusing that the Broomfield Taxpayer Matters wants us to save money, but also telling people to spend more on a newspaper that isn't even being circulated to our doors anymore. So that personally uh, is not being fiscally responsible. Additionally, if a newspaper folds, this crushes transparency and we need more and more transparency. And additionally, to sort of address someone who wanted, uh, possibly, uh, you know, these ordinances to be uh, sent to them on paper, I wanted to point out that our library has a plethora of online accessibility. So that is an option if they don't have online access at home. Um, it is what many people in our community use and I'm so thankful for our library system to provide that. Thank you very much, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say as someone who started out my career as a newspaper reporter and paginator, which is the person who designs the paper, it kind of makes me sad that we've come to this point, but for decades, um, official notices like this have supported the newspapers and subsidized local newspapers and made it possible for them to stay in business. And as I think the mayor noted, that that's ending and a lot of newspapers have closed, largely because they no longer get that public notice revenue. Um, I, there is a concern that, you know, some people do read the Broomfield enterprise largely for sports and youth coverage and school coverage. And I don't know that this expenditure will be the difference, but you know, it could help um, cr- um, lead to its demise and we'll miss that. But I will support this because it gives us the opportunity to innovate. Um, we're not required to put everything in there. We might find other ways to include notices in the newspaper or find other ways to let people know. I know that um, as the Councilmember Winn noticed, the young folks don't read a newspaper or know what it is. It's hard to find things online. I do think we need to make better use of our technology as well as just old-fashioned signage. I know we would have avoided a great deal of pain if there'd just been a big billboard up where the water tanks were gonna go and visibly notified people something was there rather than relying on some paper notification. So I will support this, as I said, um, with some reluctance, but with the idea that we revisit this and be innovative in how we notify people of, of things that may affect them. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I appreciate that. When I first was elected to council in 2017, we always had a Broomfield enterprise reporter sitting here covering all of our, 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 our processes and our hearings and telling people what's going on so they knew what we were working on. That went away years ago. There hasn't been a Broomfield enterprise reporter in this chambers and I, I can't even remember, probably pre-pandemic. So that's another big problem, because that was how some people found out about the projects we're working on and opportunities to get involved. That went away. So they're not even covering the city council anymore. Uh, a lot of the stories that they run are just Boulder or, uh, national news feeds, generic articles, especially online. It's hard to find any local news. And so I feel that too, because I worked in news and trying to send out emails on a subscription, it is, is getting better, but we're nowhere near the coverage where we, we need to be. So I will do another plug for our Be in the Loop newsletters, because you can sign up for council meeting agendas, boards and commissions, parks, rec, whatever you're interested in, and you will get a regular email letting you know what's coming up and how you can get involved. I think if you're not on social media, I understand that. But we do, we do have a lot of information that we push out on these emails that would fill those gaps. Um, in the meantime, since we don't really have newspaper coverage. So that's my, um, soapbox talk. Uh, anything else on this? Okay. Then next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2245. Councilmembers, please enter your vote electronically.
And Mayor, my vote is yes.
Okay, got a yes from Councilmember Henkel. Mayor Protem Shaft, did you have a, and he's, do you want a verbal vote?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, yes, from Mayor Protem Shaft. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. And that passes unanimously. Next, proposed ordinance 2246, which is the personnel merit system. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2246 submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. A proposed amendment revising Chapter 9 of the Broomfield Charter Personal Merit System.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2246 on first reading and published in full? Councilmember Ward.
I'll move, so moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No discussion, so, uh, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2246. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, how do you vote? And-
My vote is yes.
Okay.
And my vote's yes.
Mayor Protem Shaft is yes. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Next is ordinance number 2247, which is the Legal and Judiciary Ballot Question. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2247 submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. A proposed amendment revising Chapter 10 of the Broomfield Charter Legal and Judiciary.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2247 on first reading and published in full? Councilmember Leslie.
Move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
I second the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2247. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Henkel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. As a reminder, these ballot question ordinances will return to council on second reading on August 13th, 2024. If approved, they will be on the ballot in November 2024 and the voters will have ultimate approval. Ms. Rogers, is there any other business related to the charter amendments that you want to raise?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we saw in some of the public comment, there might have been confusion about the term limit question and if that question included the mayor's term length. Term length is separate from term limits. Somebody could be supportive of the mayor having a four-year term, but not supportive of term limits. So they're very separate concepts. Um, so I wanted to check in with council because there might have been an expectation that you were going to see a mayor term limit question um, put to the voters for the November 2024 election. I wanted to see if that was council's direction, because if it is, I would prepare that for council for first reading on the 23rd or the 30th and then second reading on August 14th, so we can have the same level of public engagement on that question if that's council's direction.
August 13th. We'll get some feedback from council. And, but it went on. Mayor Protem Shaft.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, my, uh, my voting machine's not quite working, but I can still queue in, uh, to talk, so. Um, this, this was, uh, one of the unintended consequences of the, uh, of the approval of 2243. Um, with the, uh, change- With the change in language to say, "No mayor or councilmember shall serve more than three consecutive partial or full terms in office," giving the mayor a four-year term now means a mayor can serve 12 years instead of, I think, what was the proposal of only eight years. I think that was the intent. So I cannot support moving this forward now that we have approved ordinance 2243.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
Thank you, Mayor. I support moving it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. I support moving this forward. We need to have this discussion for every four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other feedback, direction for Ms. Rogers? Oh, there they are. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will support the discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
I support the discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Wynn?
I also support the discussion as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Same, support.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
So I appreciate the Mayor Potem's comment. And I'm just curious, is there a way to... This is a question for Ms. Rogers, probably. Is there a way to provide the four-year terms with a two-year term limit? Or is the Mayor Potem correct that there is no longer an option there? Because we passed the...
No, we didn't. It has to go to the ballot.
But could there be...
We didn't pass anything.
Sorry, but we brought the other one to the ballot. So if we... Okay, so that's actually for clarification. Like, it'd be a... Is there a conflict there if one passes, if they both pass? If we passed a question that said councilmembers and mayor would get three consecutive terms, and we passed a different ballot question that said the mayor would have four-year terms for two consecutive, is that... They're in conflict.
The ballot question on a mayor's... On this ballot question is specific to length. It would not mention term limits at all. They are totally separate concepts. I think what Mayor Potem, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was speaking to, is the practical impact. If the term limit question passes, which has been approved by council on first reading, and council does a mayor length question, and they both pass, you could have a mayor serve for 12 years, three terms.
Okay, so this would not include a term length? Is there any way to... And is there any way to add the term length? Because the four-year terms with the two consecutive terms?
I would advise against it. I do think these are two separate concepts, and they need to... Both term limits need to have a separate ordinance, and term length needs to have a separate ordinance.
Well, that's unfortunate. Okay, so it doesn't matter what I think here, because you have enough support, so thanks.
All right, so I do have six to move it forward.
So we will... I will work with Manager Hoffman to make sure we get it on a meeting without overloading the next two meetings. But it's got to come to council either on the 23rd or the 30th, because we must have second reading on August 13. And there'll be public comment at both those meetings.
All right. Mayor Potem Shaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify. So I do support this conversation. Like, it's definitely convoluted with the ordinance 2243 that we approved. I think that having a mayor that serves four years per term makes a lot of sense. It cuts down on the, basically, running for reelection during those times. We see this from our House of Representatives, that they're basically in campaign mode. So it removes that. Just to the south of us, we have a mayor that serves a four-year term in Westminster. It makes a lot of sense for those voters. One of the downsides is, is there isn't a mayor election every two years. That is the downside. But for Westminster, they have continued to have high election turnout regardless of that. So I think that there's a lot of sense that creates a lot of stability within the mayor's role. The mayor's role is a very large job. And so by having that stability there for those four years makes a lot of sense. So I do support the conversation. I just believe that it's now convoluted and complicated with ordinance 2243 as it's written. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, so I think you have direction.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. So for our final item, and thank you all, thank you all from the audience and our staff and our Charter Review Commission for the work that was put into this. I mean, it was time for an update, and I just appreciate the work that went into getting us here. So next, it's education time. Moving on, our final item under Action Items. Staff will provide council with a report on the status of the 2024 real and property valuation. This item includes a Board of Equalization resolution that council sitting as the Board of Equalization will consider. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Yamashita is making his way. He is our county assessor. Mr. Yamashita, introduce us to this item, please.
City and County Broomfield Assessor. Tonight, this report that I'm presenting to you is pursuant to 398105 print 1 and 398105 print 2, Colorado Revise Statute, which states, "The assessor shall report to the Board of Equalization the valuation for assessment of all taxable properties in the county. The assessor is also to provide a list of all persons who have protested and their action in each case. The assessor is also required to provide a list of all persons who have failed to provide any personal property schedules, which are referred to as non-filer's personal property declarations." There are 82 non-filers this year. I'm going to take the council next to the value changes. So the assessed value changes between December 31, 2023, and June 2024 after assessor-level appeals are what I'm going to go through with you. So basically, under real property, in 2023, our valuation was $2,561,590. In January, or in June, June 28, 2024, that value was $2,193,449,180. That's a change of $137,297,390, which is a change of 6.68%. For personal property, we had $139,839,890 for 2023, and $153,545,160 for 2024, which is a change of $13,735,230, or a 9.82% increase. As far as state assessed values, for 2023, we had $71,618,600. And for 2024, that was $71,610,110. That's a negative $8,490, or a negative 0.001%. Oil and gas valuation, for 2023, we're at $400,863,300. And for 2024, that was $297,219,500, with a decrease of $103,643,800, and a negative 25.86%. So total taxable value that we had was $2,668,443,620 for 2023. And as of June of 2024, we had $2,715,823,950. So that was a difference of $47,380,330, or 1.78% increase. As far as exempt value that we had for 2023, we had $279,235,340. And in 2024, we had $281,429,970, or for a difference of $2,194,630, or a 0.79% increase. So basically, with total assessed values taxable, we had $2,947,678,960 for 2023. And for 2024, we had $2,997,253,920, which is a difference of $49,574,960, or a 1.68% increase. So the above figures are subject to change prior to the abstract certification on August 25 of 2024. The final valuation for the state assessed properties will not be available until August. State assessed properties are assessed by the state, and they give us those numbers. The above figures are not intended for budgeting purposes. So over the next several weeks, Broomfield will complete the protest of the property valuations for both real and personal property for 2024. The city council-appointed hearing officers will conduct the hearings and make recommendations to city council no later than August 5 of 2024 for final determination. So as the period of time, the conclusion of the protest hearings and the deadline for the delivery of the abstract of the assessment is short. Staff is requesting that the mayor be authorized to sign the 2024 abstract of assessment when completed by staff after the completion of the hearings, August 5 of 2024, and prior to the deadline of the August 25, 2024 certification date. This will hopefully avoid another separate meeting, if we can get the mayor to sign off on that final number. And that is all I have. Any questions?
DocuSign is a wonderful thing. Thank you, Mr. Yamashita. So you just holler. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this item, now's the time. All right, any questions from council? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick clarification question, having read the memo. And not to cause confusion with members of the public going, that's a very small percent increase from 2023 to 2024, when they've already had this very large increase the previous years. And in the memo, you guys note that 2024 is a non-reappraisal year, and the only value changes allowed by the tax year for 2024 are due to assessment rate or value adjustment changes made by the state legislature, new construction of homes and commercial buildings, subdivision of land, additions, renovations, and tenant finishes. So this would not... 2025, we could see very different numbers. Is that correct?
Correct, because every odd number of years is a reappraisal year, whereas even number of years are what we call our intervening years. So for the 2024 valuation, we use the same information that we use for the 2023 valuations. And so when we say new construction, we are saying, so we may have had a house that was on for a percentage, maybe 10% value. We've taken that now to 100%.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to make that clarification for the residents.
You bet.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
There we go. Just a quick question, sort of a parenthetical with these numbers. Is there... Will there be any kind of analysis on what the impact would be if Initiative 50 passes? Or is it 108, correct, if that gets approved? If we comply it, what would have been the effect on these numbers and projecting forward?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Cohen. We will be... Once the ballot is certified subsequent to August 11, we've already started running those numbers, actually for both of those, the proposition and the ballot. So we're about 80% there with what the impact would be. We're not going down to the weeds, of course, but we'll have a high level for council by August 23 for that meeting, when we come back with the nonprofit adjustments.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I was hearing today that polls show it's probably doing very well. And but there's also an effort, apparently, the Capitol, to try and reach some compromise to convince Advance Colorado to withdraw Initiative 50, which would be good, because that would have a rather staggering effect on local and schools. But I appreciate... Look forward to that report.
Thank you. Councilmember Wynn?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Yamashita. My only question is, looking at the oil and gas change, I'm just curious on your take on why there's a 25% change?
So oil and gas is a self-reporting tax. So we rely on the oil and gas companies to give us the information. So we had a huge increase last year. All I can assume is that the production levels are decreasing is why we're seeing such a drastic decrease, is what I'm assuming there, or maybe market. The market dollars are different now. That could be part of it, too. But again, that is a self-reporting tax by the oil and gas companies to us, and we take it... We can go and audit them at some point in time, but right now, we just take them at their word.
Thank you. You have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
Mayor, just a follow-up to that. It's a self-reporting tax. Is there a mechanism by which it wouldn't be a self... We could not make it a self-reporting tax?
No, that's just the way it's done in the state of Colorado. They just self-report to all the counties.
Is that something that's governed by state law, or is that something we have control over locally?
State law, local law. My apologies. I was looking at Robert's rules. I'm sorry. Are you talking about the oil and gas?
Self-reporting by oil... Is that state law that controls that, or do we have any control over it locally?
State law.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lim?
Are the... Is the window closed for appeals for residential property?
For 2024, yes, they are closed.
Okay. How do we... Obviously, we had a lot of, a large volume, I would think, of appeals. Do we have any future look at how we could make the process smoother for the assessor's office?
We are currently looking at online appeal software, which we will hopefully help with getting them all entered accordingly. We hope to have that implemented by 2025. We are working with IT currently. We have an IT project manager on board. So we do currently have a vendor that we are looking at. So we are just basically trying to get everything closer to the end of the year, so we can start moving things forward.
And that will be part of what we're looking at in the budget, then?
Yes.
Is approval of that software?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And just a little update on the Property Tax Commission. We actually have meetings scheduled throughout the year for some reason, because they want to keep it going. So some of the topics that we're going to be discussing, and I said we definitely need to have experts in the room, is that option of a 12-month payment plan for non-residential property tax owners. And I know from talking to assessors and property tax administrators, that is a little bit of a logistical nightmare. So I put it as a high priority that we should have experts in the field at this meeting when we have it. The next topic was a property tax deferral program, a maximum amount of time and max time. So that's another one where you need the actual experts in these areas, not elected officials making these decisions. So I will, of course, you know, engage with all of you to make sure that those folks are in the room. Another topic we're going to be talking about is inclusion of non-residential classes in rate adjustments. There was a lot of talk about vacant land and how it zoned at the non-residential 29% assessed value, and that folks in the vacant land business think that that's too much, because it's not really generating revenue. So there's going to be some discussions about reclassifying vacant land and maybe industrial as a different category. Another is revisit the exemption for de-brucing on the 5.5% cap. So some of you know that the legislature passed a bill at the end of the session, 233, which would only go into effect if the citizen initiatives 108 and 50 fail. And so what this essentially would do is put a 5.5% growth cap on property tax revenue and some other things. So we're going to further discuss that, because we're de-brused, so we're not susceptible to that. But like Boulder County has that 5.5% cap already. So different scenarios. It's definitely tricky, because no county is the same in how they calculate their property taxes. Also, coming up, we're going to hear from assessors regarding implementation issues and policies, because a lot of these things have never been done before. And software issues, challenges with timing, and how we have to... We're passed through for a lot of these funds that go to school districts and special taxing districts. I think we all need to get on the same page and not have to deal with this nightmare. And then finally, we extended the primary homestead value reduction in 2024. And then finally, we extended the primary homestead value reduction in 2024, which was a result of that special session. So all of us got a little bit of an exemption off the top of our assessed value, and I think I saw my property tax bill go down a bit. So it wasn't quite as much of a sticker shock as it was when we got those early estimates last June, right? So it kind of had a little bit of a smoothing effect, I guess you could say. And then also, something we're already doing here in Broomfield, the Property Property Tax Commission is going to talk about means-tested, income-qualified relief for individuals and small businesses. I said to the commission, we can already do that as counties. We're doing it. So I think that's not something that the state needs to take on. Counties have the option of doing that anytime they want. And cleanup language on that Senate bill, 24233, because it was kind of rushed. And how to educate taxpayers on changes and deferral programs. That's another big one. And what's the plan for 2024 if the ballot issues pass? Because it will impact our budget. You've already probably read it's going to impact the state budget in the billions of dollars. We finally were able to fund school, public school this year. Well, that's going to go away. They're already going to have to go take take that back. So it's really got it's going to have some real implications if these measures pass in terms of service levels and what we can continue to fund. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Yamashita or Ms. Hoffman?
I think from the we're all reading about the tax ramifications. When the when these programs are implemented, if you are not understanding, the funds have to come from somewhere, right? Nobody has the money tree in the backyard. We're not the Bank of Broomfield. So when we the state for the fiscal year, which ended June 30th, was in the red, and they had to tap into their reserves in order to have a balanced budget. So aside from whether those ballot measures pass or not, the states and the state is looking at some some real dire circumstances even without that. I'd like to give our folks an opportunity to really understand before we put out service cuts and and that kind of stuff that that we really dig down and make sure that when we do go public, we have a as clear as we can idea of what that means. So we don't know if it means service cuts. We don't know if it means any kind of budget cuts. So as council knows, we have every department head watches each one of these meetings. So I don't want them to be thinking we're moving in a direction we haven't communicated with them yet.
No, absolutely. I was more referring to the state. They already can see those cuts and and the detrimental impact, so fair enough. So Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you. Yeah, this prompts me to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Henkel had said earlier. You know, we are required to have a balanced budget. It's not something that we can play around with. It's 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 a stipulation that we abide by, and we take great pains in making sure we have. And the city manager and her team work very hard to make sure that they bring to us a balanced budget. But there were a number of comments here tonight, and I've had some phone calls from folks suggesting that our finances are not in good shape. And often, they misconstrue other sources of impact on us, like state funds, and and how they may affect us in ways that require us to adjust our budgets. And yet, it's not because we're in financial straits ourselves, it's because we're being imposed by other forces. But one of the measures of of an organization's financial health is the bond rating. And so I wanted Manager Hoffman just to share, what is our current bond rating, and how does that compare with other front-range cities and counties?
Well, we have several different bond rating entities. Council's just getting ready to hear in the upcoming meetings about from the enterprise fund, but from the general funds. Over the last four years, Councilmember Leslie, we have shifted philosophically. Broomfield in the past has relied on zero-based budgeting, which I know is a very popular term. That is not conducive to forward-thinking, and it drives departments to spend to the very last minute to ensure that they have the same amounts coming next year. We've also shifted our our budget has was always based on expenditures and not revenues. So we I would love to have a household that I could say, I want to spend this much without kind of regard what that the revenue stream was. We have a significantly higher bond rating than our not in the enterprise, but in our general funds. Financially, we're healthier than we have been. That's not to say that from a staff perspective, we continue to put the budget priorities in three buckets. And the department heads over the last two years continue to do that same thing. And if it falls outside of those buckets, we have not been coming to council and recommending that. And that's critical functions, obligation, and mandates. So we know that the state continues to have unfunded mandates. We don't have any control over that. The more sausage making that happens at the 11th hour drives a much larger unintended consequences. We passed a debt policy. Broomfield's never had a debt policy, so we didn't. Again, that was the let's let's look at the expenses and not primarily the revenues. And that has everything to do with the bond rating. So for the community, we're having those budget conversations coming forth. We're having budget workshops that are also coming and department head presentations. So it's a little more complicated than just indicating what those bond issues are. Our community, as council knows, by 53%, regardless of what the political affiliation was, or any one of your demographics, came back and said fiscal sustainability is the most important thing that we should be focusing on. That helps drive staff. And so our key performance indicators include bond ratings. They include how much we're paying towards the debt to pay it off. And it also includes revenue. So in I'm sorry, reserves. So in the past, we've had 10%, and we are up to 20%, and the goal is to get to 25% so that we're we're ensuring from a fiscal sustainability perspective.
Thank you. Yeah, it is obviously not just one variable, but that's the point I want to make. I'd like the public to understand that these are complex issues. Often, we don't have control over unfunded mandates and other factors. We do have obligations around sustaining our infrastructure and protecting our assets, and all those things cost, and we're growing, et cetera, et cetera. But I want the public to know we are in very good shape, not perfect. We'd like it to be better always. But our bond rating is very high, particularly, as you said, compared to our peers across the front range. That's an indicator that the agencies that evaluate us have high faith and expectation of our ability to maintain the integrity of our finances. And so I just want the public to understand that. So when people say, I'm concerned about our finances, or we have debt of the wazoo or whatever, those are not true variables. That's not really what's happening.
Well, thank you very much for that, Councilmember Leslie. All right, any other questions or comments from council? Next is council's sitting as the Board of Equalization, consideration to proposed resolution number 2024-82. I say that again. Next is council's. I think it is the Board of Equalization, consideration proposed resolution number 2024-82. I think it is the Board of Equalization, resolution number.
Resolution number 2024-82, Board of Equalization authorizing the mayor to review and sign the 2024 abstract of assessment.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Leslie?
I move the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marshall.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on resolution number 2024-82-BOE. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Henkel, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and thank you for moving this forward so quickly.
You're welcome. Mayor Pretem Schaff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously, so thank you all very much, and thank you as well, Mr. Yamashita. There are no requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my council colleagues? Councilmember Pretem Schaff.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight is Abby Yelman's, our deputy city and county manager's last meeting. Just wanted to say thank you for your service to Broomfield community and to the organization. Your initial role as library director, your work with human resources, and your work with the city manager's office have all made an impact on this community in the past and for years to come. It has been an honor to serve alongside you. You will be missed. I wish you the best in your next chapter, and will, of course, think of you every time the Broncos beat the Chiefs.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Delgado.
My apologies that this is going to be out of order. This was a quick sidebar I had previously with our county attorney. I wanted to make a request for future action to circle back to the compensation discussion. I don't think that is fully fleshed out yet.
Okay, so the request has been made?
We can have that to the study session.
Okay.
That'd be wonderful. Great, thank you.
The next study session agenda or next one? Next Tuesday? Okay, cool.
Whenever we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from for the good of the cause? I just want to stand up and give Abby another standing ovation. There being no further business, the council-